All righty, everyone. Thank you all for being here today. And thank you for joining us at our evening meeting this June 27, 2023. In lieu of an invocation today, we'll have a moment of silence. That moment of silence will be followed by a pledge which we brought by Deputy McAllister. For those of you who are willing, please join me in our moment of silence. Thank you. Deputy, feel free to come to the mic. If you're willing, please stand up and join us for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our meeting is now called to order. Commissioners, before we go into the presentations for tonight, I would like for us to add the following agenda items. They include, one, to authorize the termination of an exchange agreement by and between Venture Communities LLC in Cobb County, Georgia dated February 10, 2022. That is to be added to the consent agenda. The second is to recommend the appointment of the Public Safety Agency Director and to add that to the regular agenda following consent. And the third is to adopt a resolution denouncing recent anti-Semitic activities in Cobb County, and that is to be added to the regular tab following consent. Commissioners, is there a motion to add those to the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, and any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Gambrell.
Prior to the vote, I would like the clerk to add my statement that is found on page 169 of the current agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow.
Same here.
Okay. No problem. Thank you. You're welcome. Commissioners, is there any further discussion or any questions? Call the question. The non-agenda items are added, five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, we'll go into tonight's presentation. The first is to present certificates of achievement to our Girl Scout Troop 383. For those of you who are here for this particular presentation, please feel free to join your Commissioner up front. Don't be shy, Girl Scouts. You guys are our bold future leaders.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to present certificates to these three young ladies from Girl Scout Troop 383 out of the Catholic Church of St. Anne's. That's my parish, too, so very special. So they have received, come around here so everybody can see how pretty you are. They've received the Silver Award, which is the highest award that a middle school Girl Scout can earn. To earn the award, they must identify an area of need, implement a sustainable solution, and complete at least 50 hours of service. So we have Gabriella Angrick and Genevieve Lloyd and Taya Park. Taya. I knew I'd get one of you wrong. So. And there are troop leaders and parents who are very proud, I'm sure, are here to, and we'll get a picture later. And this is a certificate of achievement. The first one is to Gabriella Angrick, Girl Scout Troop 383. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on earning the Girl Scout Silver Award for creating 100 math and ELA games for use in classrooms during center time and tutoring time at Bryant and Brumby Elementary Schools. The Silver Award is the highest award that a middle school Girl Scout can earn. You have shown, you have identified an area of need, implemented a sustainable solution, and completed at least 50 hours of service to earn this award. Congratulations, and thank you for your contribution to the Cobb community. So do you want to tell us a little bit about your project?
Yeah, so me and Genevieve did it together. So, yeah, I think that summary really, like, covered it all. So we implemented the games, and we had to learn lots of communication and teamwork skills because we had to communicate with principals and other teachers to identify their needs to create the games.
So we spent a lot of time on this, the game kits. So we dropped them off to the two schools. One of them was to tutors that come out of Pope High School, and the other one was directly to the school, and we worked with the vice principal.
And you did this at Brumby and Bryant Elementary. Great. Good mentors here. And Taya Park, your project, you received the Silver Award, and your project was creating a restroom and park hour signs for McFarlane Nature Park, which is a county park, to better direct visitors. So tell us a little bit about yours.
Yeah, so like the certificate said, I made I woodburned signs for the McFarlane Nature Park. And I did have some setbacks the first time I made them, so I had to redo them. They were stolen.
But you completed the project and got your silver. Now they're good. They're firm and sturdy. Okay, good.
She had a setback, but she came back.
Well, we appreciate your contribution to Cobb and the schools, and we are here to honor you tonight. I know your folks are proud. Did you want to say anything, Ms. Lloyd, as a leader, troop leader, or parent?
So I would just say that these girls have worked really hard. They actually started their projects last August, and we awarded them at a special troop ceremony in May. So we are very proud of their accomplishments and the future leaders they are becoming.
And now we'll get a picture. All righty. Our next proclamations will be provided by Commissioner Gambrell. Those of you who are here with Elder Abuse Awareness Day, please feel free to join us up front. Is Senior Services going to join us as well?
Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital members of our communities. And whereas our population lives longer, we are presented with an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a nation. Ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And whereas elder abuse may be physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, exploitation, emotional abuse, abandonment, or self-neglect. Some warning signs are bruises, broken bones, and burns, unexplained withdrawal from normal activities, an unusual depression and anxiety, sudden changes in financial situations, bed sores, poor hygiene, and unusual weight loss, strained or tense relationships, and fear of family members, friends, or caregivers. And whereas, recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that proper social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, thereby reducing the likelihood of abuse. Preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports like senior centers, human services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June 15, 2023, as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Cobb County. We would like to encourage everyone to commit to building a safer community for our older residents and honoring older adults. Presented this 27th day of June, 2023.
I'd just like to say on behalf of the North Georgia Elder Abuse Task Force, we're a group of prosecutors and law enforcement people who work statewide on elder abuse issues, that elder abuse is an enormous problem. In fact, in 2022, elder abuse in the form of scams on the Internet increased by 84% over 2021. Shows you how fast it's going. But I can say that here in Cobb County, our agencies do a fabulous job. They set the model for investigating these terribly sad cases. Our district attorney's office, sheriff's office, everyone pulls together and set the model for the state how to investigate these things. Thank you.
I think you said it all. Three, two, and we got it done. Thanks.
Okay, we are now moving into our next proclamation, which will also be brought by Commissioner Gambrell. And this is to recognize International Widows' Day in Cobb County. For those here with this proclamation, please join us up front.
Thank you for joining me. It is with great honor that I give this proclamation whereas there are about 14 million widows in the United States and more than 258 million widows worldwide. In 2010, the United Nations recognized June 23 as the first International Widows' Day of awareness, and the day has been recognized annually since. And whereas, International Widows' Day brings awareness to both the tragedy of losing a spouse and the hardships that widows suffer following the death of their spouses. The goal is to develop resources and policies that empower widows and give them access to the resources they need to rebuild their lives. And whereas, the Modern Widows Club is an interfaith, multi-generational nonprofit that provides a myriad of social needs for widows and raises awareness through advocacy. The North Atlanta chapter of the Modern Widows Club helps empower widows and provides them with tools to rebuild resilience and make positive impacts. And whereas, by giving widows this recognition and a voice, it encourages them to discover all that is available to move forward and rebuild purposeful and meaningful lives with the support of their communities. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor International Widows' Day and thank the North Atlanta community of the Modern Widows Club for its tireless efforts to ensure widows in our community have the support they need to thrive. This is the 27th day of June, 2023.
Thank you very much, and this is for all the widows in Cobb County, and there are lots of us. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our final proclamation is to designate June 27 as HIV Testing Day in Cobb County. Those here with the Public Health Agency, please join us up front. Thank you. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention estimates that only 86% of the 1.1 million people living with HIV in the United States are aware of their HIV status. Cobb County is one of the 48 counties in the United States with the highest incidence of new HIV infections, and that's out of over 3,000 counties nationwide. Whereas there is no cure for HIV infection, however, people with an undetectable HIV viral load cannot transmit the HIV virus, and when taken as directed, pre-exposure prophylaxis prevents acquisition of HIV. And whereas, Cobb and Douglas Public Health continue to provide HIV testing, linkage to care, and other prevention methods to decrease new HIV infections, decrease mortality rates, and improve quality of life. And whereas each year on June 27, the National HIV Testing Day highlights the importance of HIV testing and early diagnosis and links people to care and treatment services. The theme for 2023 is take the test and take the next step. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June 27, 2023, as HIV Testing Day in Cobb County, and we encourage everyone to get tested and to help protect themselves and others. This the 27th day of June 2023. Thank you.
And if you can introduce yourself.
Thank you so much. My name is Carrie Reed. I am the Ending the HIV Epidemic Director for Cobb and Douglas Public Health, and I want to thank Chairwoman Cupid and the Board of Commissioners for your support in our efforts. Today, we were out making sure that the residents of Cobb County knew their HIV status and knew how that they can prevent the acquisition of HIV. So we are very thankful for your support in this.
Thank you very much. I'm Lisa Crossman, Deputy Director for Cobb and Douglas Public Health. I think you said it all.
Thank you. With that, we line up for a picture. Thank you. Thanks for all the work you do.
We will now turn to the public hearing portion of our agenda. The first public hearing is with respect to property management, and we'll have the Director, Travis Dowkup, hopefully lead us in this public hearing. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Property Management has one, has one public hearing this evening regarding the employment of a consultant to provide facilities condition assessment services in the accordance, I'm sorry, in facilities condition assessment services and in accordance with state law, the board is required to conduct a public hearing before the commission expands county funds of $100,000 or more to employ an independent consultant or consulting firm or to conduct an independent study or survey. Therefore, Cobb County Property Management would request the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing where contract fees will likely exceed $100,000 regarding employment of a consultant to provide facilities condition assessment services for the selected county-owned properties.
Thank you. Our process for our public hearings is that we allow any speaker to address this topic for a maximum of three minutes. We will take all speakers, but again, your comments must be to this topic and this topic solely. With that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for our first comment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Commissioner and Mrs. Chairman, my name's Craig Harfwood, and I know I've talked about this a lot, but I finally see a different way to go about this. Apparently, how do you know it's more than $100,000 if you haven't done it yet? You might want to go to a cap and say, it's going to cost this much or less, and then did it, and that'll at least home in on, you know, the way it looks now is that you might know who's already going to do it. There's no transparency, and there's no, like, we're going to spend some money, but you're not saying how much, but the insiders know how much. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Hello, I'm Jan Barton, and many times we've said that the county does not need to hire an expensive consultant because we have really talented staff that can do a lot of this. And the main problem is there's no real documentation attached to the agenda that really justifies hiring the consultant, and it would be helpful to say not to exceed a certain amount, to the gentleman's prior point, rather than continually saying it will exceed $100,000. So please, we don't need another consultant unless we have some justification. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take our next speaker.
Hello, Chairwoman and Commissioners, Christine Rosman. I'm actually going to parrot exactly what they said, which is what we, many of us have asked for the same thing from you all, which is, if you know it's going to be over $100,000, do you know if it's going to be to over $200,000? Do you know if it's going to be over $500,000? Because there are some things that you bring to us, and you say, oh, it's going to be over $100,000. What, where's the cap on it? So I do agree that it should be within, it's going to be this or less than. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for this matter? All right, seeing none, Travis, if you can come back up. Just so we can help close out this item.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, there was a recurring theme in the speakers about having that amount of exceeding $100,000 but not stating the cap. Can you address why we may have that as a practice?
Well, in this particular case, we come to the board to ask you for the public hearing, but we've not put the RFP out on the street. So we've advertised it for three days, three in June, we advertised it in June 9, 16, and 23rd. Once that goes out, we'll receive all the proposals back in, that price could well be under $100,000, but we anticipate with the market, it'll probably be over. I guess to answer the question, we...
Well, I was going to ask our county manager or county attorney, this has been a general practice beyond property management. I don't want to necessarily just put you on the spot, but if you can share why this is a practice, as this was a general theme of concern.
It's not just a practice, it's the law that we do have to bring this back before the board to advertise for a public hearing and to basically say, if, for whatever reason, it should go over $100,000, of course, we're going to be bringing it back anyway, regardless. So this is really just asking the board for a permission to allow the public to come and share their thoughts about it. It does not mean that the project will be $100,000. It says it could be, but we don't know. But our policy and the law says we have to bring it forward in the way that we're bringing it forward. It will come back by agenda for the board to approve regardless. So if it's $90,000, it's going to come back before the board. If it's a $200,000 cost, it'll come back before the board to approve. We're not expending the money without knowing what it's going to cost. This is asking for permission for a public hearing and to allow us to put it on the street, to receive proposals, and then once we receive those proposals and choose the actual consultant, it will come back for the board to approve or not approve. And you will have an exact amount at that meeting with that agenda, an exact amount. But we, what we're saying today is we don't know if it will exceed $100,000. That's all.
Does that answer your question, Madam Chair, Commissioners? Thank you. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Gambrell.
But Dr. McMorris, I'm not going to say the amount, but my understanding is that this consultant fee for this study was in our budget, and it was budgeted.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
It's budgeted. But the agenda item itself, once the contract is awarded, will have an exact amount, and it will come back before this board. And at that time, if you would like to speak about that particular item and the cost or the cap, the public will also have an opportunity to do that as well.
And just a follow-up question. I think that's where the public gets a little frustrated, is because we can sit here and say, well, we have this in our budget, but nowhere can they go in our budget and see what we have allocated for all these different consultants.
If at any point in time a constituent wants to know exactly what something's cost, they can go into Open Gov or they can reach out to our finance department. We are transparent, there is no secret. There is a process by which we can share any information they want to know about the cost of any project. Any project.
Right, but it's any project, but that's a project that is active. What about if they want to find out how much is allocated for consulting fees, say, like for the upcoming year?
If a constituent wants to know that, all they have to do is call us or email us, and if it's one of yours, all they have to do is email you, and you can email our finance department or pick up the call or run C-Bill, and he will get you the answer to that question.
Commissioner Burrell.
Travis, this RFP is for assessing selective county-owned property? Is it for repairs or roof leaks or what?
No, ma'am, it's for five, it's for five specific areas: roofing, mechanical, electrical, conveying systems, and envelopes. So we bring the consultants in, they look at the buildings, they tell us what, they tell us what's wrong, when it's going to age out, and so we can use this for a budgeting tool in the future, so we don't have to scramble at the end and just repair the need, repair the things that are in dire need now. So this gives us, this gives us a metric in which to say, this example would be, this roof is going to fail in five to seven years. We put that in our capital improvement plan moving forward, and that way we would, we wouldn't surprise any of you, we wouldn't surprise anyone, we just have the money's there in a pot, and we move to that year. That's kind of what, we're doing it with 40, but to answer your question, we're doing it with 40 buildings first, because this is the first time we've ever taken this on. Normally, we're kind of trying to handle this ourselves, but this is a, sorry, this is a beast of a project. We have a lot of buildings to look at. So we're starting out with 40. We'll see how that goes, we'll evaluate those, we'll do our facility assessment of those, and then we'll slowly move forward in 40-block increments. That, so, I mean, that's how we're trying to eat this elephant a bite at a time, slowly and methodically.
And are these inspectors that are certified or...?
Yes, ma'am. These are engineers, these are engineers of each particular trade. So you'll have mechanical engineers that do our mechanical systems, you'll have thermal moisture protection people that come in to do the envelopes, you have roofers, electricians, conveying folks will be like Tiss and Crump, Dover, they come in, and we bring them in through one facility assessment group. This could be a large engineering group that will reach out to every person, and that engineering group will be our point of contact, and we'll work through them, and if we need a certain sector, if we need thermal, we'll deal with them, go to them, we ask them what they need, they come back to us. We use them as a point of contact and a reference to build this capital improvement model.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will now hear our second public hearing with respect to proposed amendments to Chapter 34. And I believe we have Brian Johnson with our county attorney's office. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Brian Johnson with the county attorney's office. I'm here this evening to propose code amendments to Chapter 134. And as you may recall, this is the second of two public hearings, the first being on June 13 for consideration of these proposed amendments to Chapter 134. Georgia law has certain procedures in place in statute which govern the zoning process as to the hearings, as to notice, how to conduct the hearings. And this is what this is going to be seeking compliance to. Now, I do want to stress that this is, these are not proposed changes as to the text or to any district regulations. This as, these are proposed changes as to the process, as to some of the hearing processes, and how appeals of your final decisions can be made to the Superior Court. Last year in 2022, the legislature considered and passed House Bill 1405, and the governor signed it, and it made some changes as to the process for zoning procedures. It provided some clarity to some Supreme Court decisions from a handful of years before that, which changed the way zoning appeals could be made. So what the legislature did is they heard and considered changes to clarify and delineate a process by which zoning appeals can be made to Superior Court, and to say that certain appeals will be made through a new evidence route called de novo, and some appeals will be made through a quasi judicial route, which is a review of the record. As previously stated, some of the processes being considered are for zoning applications. And so the legislature has codified that statute requires them to be appealed through a de novo standard, which is a new evidence, it's a certain way to appeal it. So after the hearing process and the Board of Commissioners makes a final decision, if there is an agreed party applicant, then they can seek to appeal that, and this clarifies that process. It's only as to zoning applications, rezoning applications, final decisions by this Board of Commissioners. The appeals are made to the Superior Court, the Cobb County Superior Court, and it's considered a de novo standard review. The legislature also clarified that some decisions will be deemed quasi judicial, meaning they were made as though this body or the Board of Zoning Appeals are in a trial court, and those are certain standalone variances, special uses. Those would be appealed through a review of the record, meaning there's a certain process you go through, you get approval from the board, you get approval from the court to seek that appeal, and this is what these proposed changes seek to clarify as well. The process is known as writa certiorari, but that name is changing as well next week. There was a bill passed last year as well to clarify that process. Some of the other changes as to the hearings, which we already have in our rules procedure, but we're putting into code regarding the agendas being published, presentation times, witnesses, and how voting is conducted, additional requirements as to 30-day notices for variance applications, quasi judicial decisions, which we already have in our code, county clerk may accept service of process, and the chairs of the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Zoning Appeals may execute certain documents after a decision's been made and someone is seeking to appeal that decision. Again, the proposed code amendments do not alter any text or amend any district regulations. These amendments are being considered and requested to ensure compliance with House Bill 1405 and state law. And again, these address procedural and appeals processes pursuant to the Georgia Zoning Procedures Act. And again, this is to maintain compliance with state law.
Okay, with that, we will have a public hearing to address this matter and this matter only. Again, we'll take an unlimited number of speakers for a maximum of three minutes. And go ahead and open up our public hearing.
Yes, hello again. I'm Jan Barton, and it would be very helpful if proper documentation was included with these. I went into the wording and how it was being changed, and I would love to see the wording back on the Georgia law that pertains to the changes that are being put forward in the text. And some of the textual changes concerned me because it looked like it was changing the process to where just one person could make a decision. process to where just one person could make a decision, for example. And I sent you my detailed comments, so I won't go anything any further, but it would be helpful to have that kind of documentation so that citizens would know what was going on and be all for it. And I appreciate you hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. If things are business as usual, there's one thing in zoning that has been a sticking point, and I made my protest one time, got walked out, and it's that the zoning attorneys aren't sworn in. They definitely should be sworn in. There, I've sat through so many years of this stuff. They can say whatever they want to induce you to approve their zoning, but they can't be tried in court for it, and yet, you make common neighbors and citizens swear in. And you can do that because state ethics, they don't care if someone's a lawyer, and they make them swear in. You depose you in front of a judge, they make you swear in. And you're a quasi judicial forum. And, you know, this is something that maybe you may have done this all in the past, but you shouldn't be doing it in the future. And just to be fair to the citizens, you know, there's no special standing for a zoning attorney telling you stuff that isn't sworn testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers with respect to this matter and with respect to this matter Okay, Brian, if you don't mind coming up and seeing if any of our commissioners have any questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Brian? Commissioner Burrell?
Yes, and we talked about this to kind of clarify, because I have the same question that Ms. Barton referred to on the appeal process. It does look like the chair has the discretion, but can you explain the cert and that that just makes the appeal process move forward with her signature?
Yes, and that new language, the proposed amendments, applies only to after the decision has been made. So when a party seeks to appeal a decision, a rezoning decision or variance decision, specifically in this case, it'd be a variance decision or a special use, it requires certain permission from the Superior Court and a signature from the county to allow that appeal to go up and for the record to be reviewed. And that's what, that's what that language is clarifying. And what our code is going to say is that the chairs of either the Board of Commissioners or the Board of Zoning Appeals may execute those signatures and may conduct those signatures. And of course, if they weren't available to their designated needs, the vice chairs may do that as well, but it's just the after the fact, after the decision's been made. So state law, our code is very clear that only the Board of Commissioners can make a final decision as to a rezoning or any of these zoning procedures, decisions under those. And the Board of Zoning Appeals has special jurisdiction over variances of the type.
Thank you for clarifying. Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
I know the issue of swearing in came up and just wanted to understand the standing of when attorneys do come and present a case, what standard they're held to.
Well, an attorney representing an applicant is there to advocate and to present. They're not necessarily providing testimony in that regard. It's not typical for an attorney to be sworn in in court or before a public hearing. I'm not sure if any other jurisdictions do it that way as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Gamble.
Just one other question, and Brian, this isn't for you. Do we need to vote on this tonight because the agenda item doesn't read as such? But this might have seen any
Maybe, hopefully you got it. Clarifies the vote.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is our second hearing, so we have to adopt tonight.
I just hadn't seen my pink sheet.
Yes, the adoption.
The clerk just showed me. So it does say approve.
Yes, it does state that.
So at this time, I would close and just recommend approval of these code amendments through a vote tonight.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Call the question. The vote passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move into our first public comment.
As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When you come forward for public comment, if you would, please state your name, and if you are speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. We suggest the comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating others with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government, and there is a timer on the podium to keep track of your five-minute timeline. The first speaker is Ms. Jan Barton.
Hello again. I'm Jan Barton, and this is not to be impertinent, I promise. I have some points I want to make. So what I'm saying here is Chair Cupid is Cobb, you're Detroit because some things are starting to look a little similar. This is talking about how decades of Democratic rule ruined some of our finest cities, and I know that you were formerly in Detroit. I don't mean to pick on you, but we don't want to ruin Cobb County. Detroit last elected a Republican mayor in 1957. It is now the model of urban failure. It's recognized more for its poverty, crime, rot, and bankruptcy than the great cars, it turned out, in the early '70s. We don't want Cobb to go that direction. This article is from South Cobb News a year ago, expressing dismay over the billion-dollar budget. It's getting worse. Soon, our board will be presenting the larger budget for approval, even larger than the South Cobb raised the alarm over a year ago. Are property taxes going up under Chair Cupid? Yes, they are. And the majority of the board could lower the millage rate and help us all save on taxes, but will you? Cobb County Tax Assessments Increase for Most Homeowners is the title of this. The example shown quotes homeowners on a fixed income. They said the estimated tax rate on their Cobb County assessment nearly doubled from over $700 last year to more than $1,300 this year. They find it hard to make ends meet as grocery prices soar. Stop unfair increase taxes on homes. Please lower the millage rate. This is from the Cato Institute, citing the National Association of Realtors, and adding the figure was nearly 24% higher than a year ago, but neither the Zillow estimates nor those of the FHFA are anywhere near that misleading 24% figure. They went on to say, if property taxes keep rising in the coming years, I think a lot of homeowners ought to show up at those local government hearings and demand local governments cut property tax rates if housing assessments keep rising. That's what we're doing. The majority of Cobb homeowners are facing an increased assessment. 180,000 of them will have higher assessments than 2022, when Cobb had a record tax digest of $50 billion, with a B, 50 billion. You also have millions set aside in contingency funds. Please use those. This happens to be an article from one of many that implied that the National Library Association is pushing grooming of children. The American Library Association is described as a group that's become a lobbying group for the LGBTQ plus agenda. Go to their website, where they talk about all of their efforts to push this agenda in libraries. We have that on the agenda tonight. I'm asking you not to approve it. The libraries are supposed to be apolitical. They should not be having sessions for only a few special people. The library is a place all people can go for good books and other sources. Please vote no. This article discusses the fact that Democrats allow communists to infiltrate the party across the nation. Cobb County rejects communism. Please stop pushing any such agenda. There are 10 steps to communism, this former Canadian Communist Party member stated. One control tends to cause another until as a logical result, the state controls and finally owns everything, remembering that these policies of high taxation and centralization of credit were the demands of the Communist Manifesto. I'm reminding you of this because we're creeping eerily left, and we don't like that. Do not turn Cobb into Detroit. Obey Georgia laws, including the SPOSS laws. You have something on the agenda tonight, which was approved on a former SPOSS list that county voters voted on. You need to list that as infeasible, put it out for the voters if you're going to be selling that property. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Bill, before you call the next speaker, I just want to speak to accuracy regarding a comment made, and for years, I've been watching this story unfold with some amazement because in my profile for Facebook, I do acknowledge that I'm from metro Detroit, just as we live in metro Atlanta. But I will tell you, I'm from Oakland County, Michigan, which is one of the most affluent counties in the state of Michigan, that has a demography that reflects that of Cobb County. And I want to correct you because it is a shame that you would try to pinpoint a location on where someone lives and associate the entire character of that community with the entire character that is evolved from an individual from that community. I find that to be slightly prejudicial, and I think it's inaccurate based on where I actually am from. But for anyone who is here in the county, who is from Detroit, I also feel as if your comments were offensive and disrespectful, and they paint people with a very broad brush. With that, we will go to our next speaker.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Hello again, Christine Rosman. I'm in Marietta. I have been focusing a lot lately on public comment about the DEI stuff, because DEI is permeating everything. It's permeating our counties, our states, it is permeating businesses. You have to be living under a rock if you don't know about what has happened with Anheuser-Busch, what has happened with Target, what has happened with Fox News. All of these things are all DEI-related. This has had values of these companies that were in the billions, that are in the billions, taking their valuations down by billions. This is the same thing that you are instituting, what our Cobb County is instituting with all this DEI stuff, this diversity, equity, inclusion. It sounds so wholesome, so wholesome, and it's not, because it's socialism, you know it, and you're just kind of making it sound good and, you know, put it real flowery. There was a piece that I read, and I did not, it was an African-American woman that wrote it. I don't know her name, but this is part of it. Regarding DEI, most Americans know that equity currently means that government must treat Americans differently because of their race. Congress pointed out, why is there a need for DEI in the first place? Doesn't hiring by race violate our ideals and even our laws? The Subcommittee Chairman, Representative Ryan Mass, Republican in Florida, started on the right note when he opened the hearing by saying, what we are discussing is the budget for the office that is essentially the filter for all hiring and retention of the State Department. This office has a clever name that uses strong emotional words, diversity, equity, inclusion, but functionally does the opposite of what America has always stood for, which is very simply the best man and the best woman for the job. So DEI plays to giving a man a fish for the rest of his life as opposed to teaching a person a fish. It does not help with people finding their own feet. I think we had enough of it. And I know that Chrysalis Labs, that is their, or Chrysalis Lab, which we have spent, I know that there's like not a money trail there, but I know they don't do their stuff for free, because I think Brookhaven paid, what, $80,000 for a study, but I don't know if anybody's figured out how we paid for it or what they charged us for it. But Chrysalis Lab, their tagline is radical transformation. Okay? We're not looking to radically transform Cobb County. We moved to Cobb County because we don't want to live in Fulton, we don't want to live in DeKalb, we don't want to live in Gwinnett, and it is starting to really shift. And I will tell you also, I went, I was so glad that you had the previous event with the recycling. It was very nice, glad to be there. And I looked around, and it was a very nice staff, very friendly, but I thought, wow, if we're so racist, which is what Chrysalis Lab is saying, why is there, why is there like maybe 80% blacks working this event and that are Cobb employees and only like 20%, and I wasn't even seeing any whites? I had a very difficult time with that.
Excuse me for a moment.
Are you going to take my First Amendment right away?
I'm not taking any time away from you at all. I just need to confer with my county attorney so I can sit up here in peace. So there is a clause in our rules of procedure that provide that comments should not be made that are offensive. We continue to teeter on that line, and perhaps if she were black, she would know, when you just refer to someone's race like that, it comes across as offensive, just as it would if I were to refer to her race in its plurality. And so, I'm trying to determine how long we have to sit here and hear this comment, and hear, excuse me, these comments, when they have not just approached being offensive, but I think actually are. Bill, please help me out. You can wait, Christine, until I get his response.
I will go ahead and quote.
I'm asked for my county attorney to speak, so I'm just asking for you to get his response, and then I just need to, I just need to hear from him. Make sure I'm not being overly sensitive.
Chairman, I'm not going to say that you're overly sensitive. I think all of our ears might be tingling with the responses, but to the extent that it rises to the level of being derogatory or offensive and under a constitutional standard in a public meeting, I don't think it's reached that level.
You may continue.
Thank you. No, because we've been victimized of saying how bad we are and how racist we are, and we're not. And that is where it is so frustrating for us, because we're not allowed to be represented. Quoting you, you look at things by race because my experience has been here in Cobb that the level of predominance of residents or people of color may not always be maintained or invested in as other areas with people who are of less color, while they did not feel that way. All our board was in
Your time has run. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kevin Redman. The next speaker is Kevin Redman.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I need to take a two-minute break.
Take it.
Thank you. Welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We will resume public comment. Bill, if we can have our next speaker.
Aloha, Kevin Redman, District Two. We need to talk about what's happened in Cobb County over the past year.
One second.
I don't know.
We can stop the clock, please, until we address the audio.
Don't align with their political agenda, removing your voice and your vote. I could take this as far back as the 90s and we need to talk about what's hap-
Thank you, we can reset the-
Thank you.
Can't hear us.
...in Cobb County over the past year and why it should matter to every county in the U.S. Little did we know that Cobb would become a precursor to what the nation witnessed in Tennessee, a national organized effort of elected officials at the state level attempting to remove other local elected officials that don't align with their political agenda, removing your voice and your vote. I could take this as far back as the 90s and Newt Gingrich, but I'll start with the historic 2020 election. For the first time in history, we saw the Cobb County Board of Commissioners led by all women for the first time. The election of the first black female board chair, Lisa Cupid. The election of a black female commissioner in District Four, Monique Sheffield. And the election of the first black female commissioner in District Two, which includes East Cobb, the Cumberland CID, Smyrna and Vinings, Jerica Richardson. This election put some into a panic, however, and a barrage of attempts to weaken the board immediately began, and no area was targeted more than East Cobb. Let's start with the cityhood attempts. In February 2022, a plan to carve out a few cities in Cobb quickly began in an attempt to reduce county influence. East Cobb and Commissioner Richardson's District Two was targeted and a proposed city of East Cobb began its journey under the Gold Dome. After a lot of debate, the bill passed along party lines and the referendum went up for a vote in May of 2022. What they didn't see coming was a brilliantly-led bipartisan opposition alliance and the community's outright rejection of a truly bad idea. It ultimately failed 73% to 27%. Now on to home rule. Hedging their bets, the architects of the Cobb carve-outs were also planning to actually remove Commissioner Richardson in a series of unprecedented moves. Bear with me here for a second. You may remember, 2020 marked the decennial process of the constitutionally mandated U.S. Census. And with the census comes new district maps. The effort to review and redraw local district maps has always been done in the Georgia Capitol by each county's local delegation. After the outcome of the 2020 local election results, a small fringe group led by West Cobb State Representative Ed Setzler decided that they were going to ignore established precedent by ignoring the Cobb local delegation and make their own map. To the Cobb local delegation's credit, they ignored the fringe partisan noise, created a revised map with the Board of Commissioners that largely kept the county districts unchanged, and passed that map within the delegation. Despite this, Setzler and friends went out on their own and created a map that drew Commissioner Richardson out of her district in the middle of her term, something that has never been done before, and risked setting a dangerous precedent that could be repeated in any county every year. The map that drew Commissioner Richardson out of her office in the middle of her term also passed in February of 2022, and now Cobb County had to decide how it was going to defend itself from this abuse of power. Because the Cobb local delegation created and passed their own map in the Capitol, the county was able to assert what is called home rule, a constitutional mechanism that allows the county to basically veto the state when it steps out of line the way it did here. The Board of Commissioners voted to assert home rule in October of 2022 and placed a state's Cobb delegation map into law. Just a few months later, now freshman Senator Ed Setzler, who has now taken this very personally, begins the 2023 state legislative session with two bills that would be yet another attempt to remove Commissioner Richardson from office before the end of her term. And one of those bills introduces yet another map during a non-reapportionment year. That dangerous precedent that I warned you about is now happening. These bills made it out of Senate committee but never over to the House for consideration, not one to give up. Setzler attempts to attach his failed bills to not one, not two, but three completely non-related bills, including one, I kid you not, that was attempting to regulate the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. His attempts ultimately failed. We're not done. Also in early 2023, Cobb GOP Vice Chair Debbie Fisher filed an ethics complaint, saying that Commissioner Richardson should have recused herself during the home rule vote because of her nonprofit political advocacy committee that is focused on educating the community. The Cobb County Board of Ethics unanimously voted to dismiss the complaint, stating that Commissioner Richardson's organization actually benefits the county. We're still not done. As of this recording, there have been four lawsuits filed to challenge home rule. The first two were withdrawn. The current two have actually been filed by Cobb County Commissioner Kelly Ambrell, who lives all the way over in District One in West Cobb, near Ed Setzler. If you've lost count, that was seven state bills, four lawsuits with four plaintiffs, and one ethics complaint. And Commissioner Richardson will tell you, this issue is bigger than her. County commissioners have been targeted, state representatives have been targeted, and now even district attorneys are being targeted, elected officials trying to remove elected officials. Don't give up your voice and your vote. Speak up.
Thank you. Dan Larkin, Meadowbrook. I came up here to talk about something that affects everybody regardless of color, and it's your finances. People are stretched to the limit financially. Everywhere you turn, prices are going up. The citizens have to tighten our belt. It's time for the county to tighten its belt. You are proposing things on your agenda tonight that will increase spending. You folks talk about affordable housing, yet are hypocrites because you will allow a raise on taxes on housing and make it less affordable. People paying rent will not get the homestead exemption. Don't use the excuse that house values went up and caused this increase. You will have three public hearings and vote next month. If you do what you did in the past, you will con us by allowing this tax increase. You will claim that you left the tax rate the same or even lowered it a little, knowing full well that the increase in property values will cause a de facto raise in property taxes. You just released the budget today and now you want to ram through a vote. You are playing games with the people. You are going to set a rate that results in more tax collection. This will hit the most vulnerable people in our community the hardest. Families are already pinching pennies while you're proposing spending more money on the budget. You're acting like a bunch of children that are, that can't control their spending. When you raise tax collection, you are taking money from the most vulnerable people in our community and it gets passed right on to them, especially the renters. The people told you about this last year, but you didn't listen. And here we are this year, you're about to advertise for public hearings and vote to increase tax collection on Cobb citizens. But it is surprising that the chair has quoted in the East Cobb News that her assessment went up 25%. And I have the clip from the East Cobb News, so maybe I'm getting my facts wrong here. The people of Cobb, yet her assessment on property taxes, I took this right off the site of our tax assessor, did not go up in 2022 and 2023. Yet the people of Cobb are getting shaken down while the chair sees no increase. Who will be the three adults on this board who will step up and say, no, we are not taking money out of the most vulnerable people in our community? Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Thule. I'm here to basically speak on the lack of funds for rental assistance and help. Like I said, I'm currently going through an eviction and I have, what, it was seven days at the beginning of the week. It was seven days from Monday, from last week, from Friday, until the 30th in order to pay my past due rent. And the court didn't have anything, any resources to give me. They wouldn't give me a continuance. I've been calling place from place. I've been calling everywhere, every resource I can think of, every resource that I was given, I've been calling. They said that the resources have been depleted. I've even gone to churches asking for help. They gave me more resources. It's like I'm going in a circle. It's just, it's no help out there. Like, and then when you do find places that will help, it's like, it's a process, it's very long. It's really long and it's like you'll be evicted before you can get in a place to get help. So I, and I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for the whole community because there's more people. Like I have a friend, I have other friends that's getting ready to be evicted because the rent is so high, keep going up. It's just, it's never enough and we really don't know what to do at this point. Like everywhere, everywhere has turned us around, everywhere gave us another number to call. I can give you a list of numbers. Everywhere said that they don't have any more funds, call back next week. I've called every day, I've called every week, I've called every month, it's the same thing. I'm just, I don't know what to do. I'm just asking for help for the community, not just me, but for everybody because it's like we're all going through the same thing and it's a lot of us that really need help. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to respond. We have some money set aside, in fact, millions of dollars set aside for rental assistance through our American Rescue Plan program, but we are ramping that up. And I know I've talked to providers that have talked with me about challenges in ramping that process up. So I know if you're contacting any of our organizations that have been awarded funding through that, you're right, they're, right now, we are limited until money does start flowing and there is a process. But what I've done is I've been reaching out to our Community Development Block Grant Director because there's supposed to be organizations in Cobb that are getting federal funding and I'm trying to understand where that disconnect is. So I'm going to have my assistant get your contact information and I'm going to connect you with her to see if we can be a little bit more narrow in who we reach out to, who may potentially have funding.
Next public speaker is Lance Lambertton.
Good evening. My name is Lance Lambertton. I'm speaking on behalf of the Cobb Taxpayers Association and I want to talk about taxes and the budget. Last year, the tax digest went up by, I believe, around 12%, but our taxes also went up because the millage rate remained the same. At that time, I asked for some consideration that the millage rate be reduced to at least compensate to some extent for the increase in taxes that we are being forced to pay as a result of the increased tax digest. This year, the same thing is happening again. And so we've got two years in a row of taxes going up during a period of high inflation. Obviously, to have to have our taxes increase at the same time that inflation is rampant is really making it very difficult. It's difficult for the people who just came up here before and they're struggling with meeting their rent. Rent is associated with the tax burden. There is a connection. If you want to help the renters in our community, how about getting the taxes down to where they should be? Now let me just mention one thing here. I recently went through Cobb's annual financial report and the fund balances and reserves, according to what I understand when I'm reading, are more than 70% of assets on hand. That means total assets for the county, according to the financial report, is $1,135,647.47 in total assets. Reserves are $804,180,855. That is a huge amount of reserves to have. It's irresponsible from a public finance standpoint to have that kind of reserves available and yet keeping, and yet not giving us any tax relief under those circumstances. There's a real disconnect there. This year, I'm imploring the county, at least three of you, to do the right thing and lower the millage rate. If you can't lower the millage rate to make it revenue neutral, then split the difference. But we are hurting in our county. You need to do the right thing. Reserves are way out of whack with what they should be and it sounds to me, it appears to be kind of a slush fund. And it's wrong, it's inappropriate, and you need to do the right thing. Thank you.
Bill, if you can- Is there anyone from Finance here? Is our CFO here? Is our CFO here? Hey, Bill.
Good evening.
Good evening. Not a new discussion, but if you can help in addressing fund balance and
Absolutely.
why our reserves are where they are.
Happy to. So we actually had this conversation this week, and we're actually setting up a process of having a work session to discuss that. So this is great timing. We just completed our trip from New York with our rating agencies. We have already received one of the ratings back. We maintained our AAA. But a part of that, one of the items that we talk about is we get a scorecard. There's two big items on that scorecard that do not measure to AAA status. Fund balance, reserves is definitely one of those. So we are still far below the median for AAA counties, far below the average reserve set aside when we compare us against like counties, but especially AAA counties. So when we look at reserve levels, if you look at that, we are around 30% countywide. So one of our fund balance policies that we set a few years ago was 25% for general fund. General fund is improving. We're north of 40. But when they look at it globally for the county, we're in this 30s still, which is far below the median for all AAA counties. The other challenge that we face is liquidity. So that's cash on hand, and based on the way our revenues come in, that is always a timing issue and will continue to be so. We have made improvements since 2018. The board's made some very proactive changes to improve both fund balance and liquidity, and those have improved since 2018. But our liquidity scores a triple B. So that is far below the AAA status. Our fund balance is a double A status. So we're still not, for those two, scorecard-wise, we are still not at a AAA status, and those two are very big, important categories. Some of our policies and procedures that we have in place do offset that, which is one of the reasons we maintain the AAA. So if you just look at where we are today, it is much improved over 2018. But we scored a AAA in 2018. But those areas are two areas that the board has looked at, and we focus very heavily on in making improvements.
What is the significance of the triple AAA rating?
So the AAA obviously allows us to borrow money at the lowest possible rate, which is important as the county has to go to market. And we have gone to market for a few bonds in the past. It is viewed both globally, countywide, and then also our water system is also a AAA. So the water system is something that has been more active in the debt market as of recently, and we've had to do those borrowings, which allow us to get a better rate. In addition to that, it speaks to the financial management of the county, as well as the leadership of the county, in saying that we are doing and following the best practices that are available to us.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Can we go to our final speaker? Oh, that was our final speaker. Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, we are now at our consent agenda. For those of you who are here in the audience or are watching our meeting remotely, the consent agenda items are scrolling on the screen prior to our meeting, and we'll do so once our meeting concludes. Commissioners will vote on the consent agenda items in bank all at one time, except we do have an exception to item 11, which will be heard as a regular agenda item following today's consent agenda. So with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the items on consent as the consent agenda has been revised, and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel, again with the exception to item 11.
Second?
Second in discussion.
Yes.
Bill, do we have to vote to remove something from consent?
No, your rules allow just one commissioner to pull something from consent. Yes.
Also, with regard to the consent agenda, I do not support items 14, 15, 16, and 40.
Okay, may you repeat those again, please, Commissioner?
14, 15, excuse me, 14, 15, 16, and 40.
Okay, 14, 15, and 16 refer to a grant for the Cobb libraries, and 40 with respect to an exchange agreement with venture communities. Okay, thank you. And that'll be noted by the clerk, please. Okay, Commissioner Gamble?
And I'd also like the clerk to note my objection to agenda items number 14, 15, and 16 as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, call the question. The consent agenda passes 5-0. Thank you. We will now move to agenda item number 11.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm the county manager. We have one item for consideration this evening. Our item is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize an agreement between Cobb County and Sweetwater Mission, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, to serve as fiscal agent in support of the Georgia 100 Program through the Atlanta United Foundation in partnership with Local Initiative Support Corporation, or LISC. Sweetwater Mission will serve as a pass-through fiscal agent for the project at Cobb County Parks, will be in charge of all bidding and construction of the mini pitch. We ask that the BOC authorize the agreement between Cobb County and Sweetwater Mission to serve as fiscal agent, support of the Georgia 100 Program grant through Atlanta United Foundation and LISC, authorize corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? I do have some comments with respect to this agenda item, and just want to provide some history of why I will not be supporting this agenda item this evening. This agenda item pertains to a mini-pitch soccer park in the South Cobb area, which was proposed pre-pandemic when I was serving as district commissioner. This project came to my attention from community members from an organization called Soccer in the Streets, and also one of our Transit Advisory Board members. Soccer in the Streets is a nonprofit organization that provides recreational soccer in what's called a mini-pitch soccer field, that is a smaller soccer field than what we're typically used to, that is still allows the game of play. And what that does is it provides underserved communities access to the sport in a very unique location. The unique location is near a transit stop, where those that might live in a community where there is heavily used transit, sometimes those communities have underinvestment by way of recreation. And so there was a unique opportunity to consider putting in a mini-pitch soccer park in the Six Flags area, immediately adjacent to the Riverside epicenter, and also next to a transit stop. This project was to coincide with a road improvement enhancement in the area. There was a lot of discussion with staff that had a meeting with the proposers of that project, and we also met with the Riverside epicenter, which today just sent me a history of their communication, providing that they were supportive of the project, and look forward to seeing how this could dovetail into the services that they provide at the epicenter. For this project, we also met with community leaders, or spoke with them by phone, and got letters of support, Michael. I can't remember which ones we got. All of them, we got letters of support from, but we got letters of support from the Ostel Community Task Force, from Mableton Improvement Coalition. I'm not sure if the epicenter had a letter of support, but I believe Six Flags, Dale Ketsel, I believe, also provided a letter of support for us to put that in that location. I think what was at issue at the time was finding a fiscal agent. And also, with the road project, there were a series of communication with the epicenter and DOT. And so it took some time for us to have a public meeting. And when the public meeting ensued, it occurred during the pandemic in June. And we had a virtual public meeting with respect to this project to gain public support, of which there were at least a couple of dozen attendees in addition to staff to that meeting, where we asked the community for their support publicly and got their feedback. We shared with them the layout of the project, and we heard various points of support for the project. I love the concept of the walking track. This is a fantastic idea for the community, which would be the Six Flags community. Let's see. There was a concern, provided that it was narrow between Wendy's and the epicenter. But that person still said, "Thank you for the park. We're going to try to improve the quality of life for our community. It looks like this neighborhood is on its way to becoming a great place to live." Other comments say, "Thank you. Thank you, our organization would like to be involved. This looks like a wonderful plan. Thank you so much. I look forward to hearing more as the park plan develops." Well, what we did not hear is how the park plan was developing until this agenda item. There was some challenge, well, the community didn't hear. I know you and I spoke because there were challenges with getting the support, I believe, of the epicenter for parking spaces. And there were initial concerns with respect to, there were initial concerns with respect to the nonprofit. And so, fast forward to our recent agenda item. I learned that the park project that we had planned for and had community meetings with respect to buoy this area of the county, was now going to have that project moved to an area that is miles away from the Six Flags area, and more of a residential, or single-family home residential community. It would be moving to Wallace Park. I sent Communications a link, I'm not sure if you have it, CP of Wallace Park, but I would like to see that visual so the audience can understand my concerns with this. Okay, so the project is being moved from the Six Flags area to Wallace Park, and forgive me, perhaps this can be done, I didn't look at the distance between the Six Flags area to this location, but this is not proximate. You cannot walk here. You have to drive here, probably a 10, 15, maybe a 10-minute drive. So if you look here at Wallace Park, the road that will access this park is located to the west of where you see the baseball field, right there. That is the entryway to this very long linear park. It is my understanding from this agenda item that the mini-pitch field would be at the back of the park, and one of the tennis, further back? Keep going. Right there, where the tennis courts are, it would take, it would take up a tennis court. And this is part of my concern, is that as I frequented this park as a commissioner and also with my children, it feels less safe as you traverse this park because there is less activity here unless there is a game day where you'll see the area more activated. But a lot of the park use pertains to what's going on closer to the west end of the park. And if you look at the east side of the park, you will see the far, the closest parking lot to the tennis court is not visible to the tennis court. So if you're a mom like me that's tired when you come home from work and all you want to do is park yourself in a car and let your kids go practice, have their lessons on the basketball court, which I used to do, I can't sit in my car and see them, which means I have to go stand at the basketball court because there are no chairs there, which means that it's very difficult to see the safety of your child. And I share this because there, not only is just the layout a little difficult to traverse, and generally someone would feel a little less safe being at the back of the park. This park has actually had some activity there that makes this park less safe, particularly where those basketball courts and the tennis court is. So I have a challenge with moving this amenity, which is in a highly visible area, next to a recreational amenity here towards the back of a park, where the activity becomes more seedy, as I've seen when I've taken my children there, and it's towards the rear of the park. I think this undermines the intent of this asset to be visible, to, and accessible to an under-invested community. But it also is no longer soccer in the streets. It becomes soccer deep in the park. And this was not the original intent of this project. And the people who were engaged in the immediate, or in the initial public meeting for this project have not had any follow-up for three years. They have not had anyone tell them that what they were invested in, what I've asked their trust to support, that it would materially change when it came for our approval. And that is where the rub is. I am not saying that this amenity couldn't go here, but I think its success is going to take public support, just simply based on its location. That to activate someone to bring their child here, or to save child, go to soccer practice and walk deep in the park to do that is a different level of commitment than I know it would have been from the amenity of the Riverside epicenter off of Six, excuse me, off of now Riverside Parkway. So a few things. I contacted Sweetwater Mission because they are the contracting agent with the county, and I asked them about this project, and they've had some changes in leadership. There is one continuing board member, Charles Black, who I did see a history of communication as he was being asked to support the progress of this project. And when I saw the length of the project, I realized now I know why there were some difficulties with the back and forth, because he's had some significant health issues. And so as this project has traversed leadership of Sweetwater Mission with the new director, they were included, but they were not included in a sit-down meeting to truly have a grasp of this project. They just know they want to support the community. And so my concern is moving this project in the way that it is today, I think it undermines, first, the commitment that was made to those residents that I consider stakeholders in this project by way of their being present in that initial public meeting. As a commissioner, I don't take my word to citizens lightly, that when I go to them and ask for their trust and support, that I feel as if I owe them, I owe them my commitment to follow through on the things that we've committed to do, especially when I ask them for that commitment. And so to not go back to them, I think, is not only offensive a little bit to me as a commissioner, but I think perhaps it just is in contrast to the way that I've seen parks handle projects. I've always known parks for the civil projects that have transpired, for us to always keep the community informed, to let them know of changes, and this did not happen here. So it begs the question, why for those other projects and not for this one? Are these citizens there any less valued for their input, for their knowledge, than those of the other area? And if so, if not so, then why can't we take the time to meet with them, to let them know that this project is not going to be happening in their community, that in fact it's going to happen somewhere else? And then why not activate the citizens here to let them know that this amenity is coming, which I think could work towards our benefit? If you want to create a sense of place, recreation here, we can get them involved early so that they would know that this amenity is coming. So I just have grave concern about that. I think taking time to perhaps see if there could be support around this change would be prudent and consistent with our practice, what I've seen from our parks and recreation projects. I think it's consistent with the spirit of the nonprofit organization that approached me to want to have this project, because I perceive from our communication that they're empowering a community, not just providing. And I think that gets to my concern about not engaging a community. Yes, we might all get to the same place at the end of the day, but the way you empower communities, especially those that are underinvested in, is to engage them. And so I think And so, I think while our commissioner has the ability to just sign off on this today and move it forward, I just see it not being consistent with the model of empowerment, of having citizens on board, especially when it's the county that reached out to them. Again, I believe that there are other factors. With the geography of this park, with the location of it, with the activity that's occurred there, that it significantly diminishes the visibility of a project that is going to be funded by Atlanta United to help build the spirit of soccer. And I just think we could do better. Those are my comments and why I won't support this and why I will still advocate, should it be approved tonight, I will still advocate for the funder, as I've reached out to them already, and for Sweetwater Mission, to have the public meetings so that we can give the public the opportunity to weigh in as they deserve. But I would like to think that that should be initiated by this body. Are there any other comments or response?
Hello, Michael.
Good evening, Commissioner.
While I appreciate the passionate remarks regarding the park and sharing the history as district commissioner, I just want to take this opportunity to bring you all up to speed in my role as the current commissioner and some feedback and conversations that I've also had with the community. Now, there are several things to unpack, so guys, just kind of just stay with me. With respect to the community meeting, I also had an opportunity to review some of the comments and feedback that was shared. And yes, there were comments that it was a wonderful plan. Yes, there were comments regarding uplifting of the community. But there were also comments that shared concern with respect to the proximity of the soccer pitch park to the hotels, and I'll use the chair's words, seedy hotels along the access road. And for those that are not familiar with the location, it's off I-20 in Riverside Parkway. There is a Wendy's there. And this location is land that's been left over from a road improvement. So while there will be visibility, there is visibility from an access road. Now, just to go back and touch on a few things regarding the epicenter. And it was shared that this was brought before the community in 2020. But when we fast forward to 2022, I believe, with the epicenter. Now, just to visualize the park, the plan was to have a garden and the soccer pitch park and across the street, parking spaces. The parking spaces was going to be land which was donated by the epicenter. Once the road was improved, epicenter misunderstood that the county would allow them to erect their sign in the county's right-of-way. Well, the county would not allow them to do that. So the epicenter says, well, as much as we support this project, all bets are off. So that left the community with a garden and a soccer pitch park, but no place to park. In some of the comments, there is great concern regarding safety with this location being right off I-20. I-20 along Riverside, while we have some of the crime under control, there is still crime on Riverside. And we deal with that. Six Flags Park is yards away from this location. During park opening day, without fail, we received communication from law enforcement that there has been whatever type of bad behavior at Six Flags Park. Am I concerned regarding the safety of the children? With kids running from Six Flags Park wielding guns or whatever else? Absolutely, I am. I'm less concerned with visibility. I'm more concerned with safety. If you're familiar with the area, again, there are hotels. I want to say there may be efficiency hotels or short-stay hotels. I do know that some years ago, that law enforcement has been out to those hotels on plenty of occasions. This park would be yards from those seedy hotels. So while I understand that the location for the park, I'm sorry, for the soccer pitch would be on the backside of the park, it's more appropriately suited in an area that offers recreation. Now, I want everyone to understand that we're not taking the park away from the area. The idea is to move the soccer pitch to a park that will also be utilized by an underserved community, whether it's apartment or houses. They're still underserved. Cobb County still owns that property. It is still the plan to move forward with a garden at that property. But with moving the soccer pitch park, it gives us an opportunity now to have parking for our gardeners. Nobody's going to walk to a garden carrying their supplies across their shoulders. This is an opportunity where we can kill two proverbial birds with one stone. We have a soccer pitch park, which is beautiful, by the way. There is one that's at the SAE School also in District Four. And it's a beautiful park. I am hopeful that in having this asset or this amenity at a current park, perhaps it will curtail some of the nefarious behavior at the park. Perhaps it will introduce students to or kids to a sport that they may not have otherwise have access or interest in. So I want to be clear that nothing is being taken away from anyone. And while I understand that there was a meeting in 2020 regarding the park and that there has been community feedback about, around the park, I understand that and I can appreciate that. But what I also understand is that as the district commissioner, I have been voted in to protect your interests and to make decisions on your behalf. In a perfect world, at times, we will have an opportunity to go back to the community. We have done that at least three times with the new Osborne location. So it's not a question of Riverside residents not being shown the same respect as other places because I've been to, you know, we've had the Osborne at least three town halls. This becomes a question of safety to me. Now, while I understand that the chair and I have a difference of opinion as it relates to safety and what we describe to be safety, I just do not think that it's prudent to have such an activity off an access road off of a major interchange where Cobb Police has confirmed on numerous occasion, that when there is crime committed on Riverside Parkway, they're flying down Riverside Parkway and they're jumping on I-20. Am I concerned with kids walking from the park and possibly being in some type of crossfire or hit by a vehicle? Oh, yes, I'm concerned about that. But I think you all get the gist of what I'm saying and my decision for moving forward. I am not one for not involving my community. And for those of you who have known, who know me as your commissioner, you know, I'm very accessible and it's never my intent not to go to my community for anything. But I will share with you that there are times that as a district commissioner, if I feel that this needs to be done differently and it's in the best interest of my community, I am positive, I am positive, if nothing less, based on my body of work, that I will have the support of my community in my decisions. And therefore, I support this agenda item.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I think no one, and particularly me, I do not question your support for the community. But it's one thing to make a decision on their behalf and to move in lockstep with the community. The community for the Osborne project were in meetings with me on a monthly basis prior to that project. So the meetings that were, public meetings that occurred, occurred after a series of several years-long efforts to gain trust of the community. I could have moved forward that recreation center there. But it's different when you have the community alongside of you. They take ownership of that asset and there is pride in that. I would just like to state, this is not an immaterial change to this project. You're moving a project where people depend on transit, which is why this area was chosen, four miles away. This is not immaterial. I would like to also share that I too am looking at the same one comment, one comment about hotels. And they mentioned the hotels not because of seedy activity. They said, I'm not sure exactly where the service road is. Is it the road near where Wendy's is? What about the hotels located on that road? Now, I will tell you that there has been seedy activity in those hotels, which is why when I initiated the Public Nuisance Abatement Agreement, and that was supported by this board, we put those in place for that location to reduce the crime that's there. So to refer to activity that occurred several years ago and then say five years later that you're going to be incriminated on a crime level that was out of control in the past, to me does not give this community hope that they can move forward from the reputation that it's had for being a crime-ridden area. The Six Flags area has made such significant transformation with particularly the Riverside epicenter. If it's not a $20 million-plus investment, it's a $30 million-plus investment right there. What else did we do to make that area more accommodating for our citizens? Where we say that it's unsafe to cross the street, we put in an actual stoplight for our citizens and it's made that area a safer place for people to traverse. But even still, this park is not accessible immediately off of Riverside Parkway. It would be accessible off of Riverside, off of the South Service Road. And again, I'm there on a frequent basis and the distance is even shorter from that parking lot to this park than it is from the Wallace Park parking lot to where the tennis court will be. So I just want to give the public the opportunity to visualize what this is. And there's even a crosswalk that's there. In fact, Christopher Boyd, today with the epicenter, he shared that nobody ever followed up with him with respect to the parking. So I have an email from him today.
That's not accurate.
I have an email from him today.
Okay.
And he says, good afternoon, I hope you're well. I wanted to share the last communication that I had regarding the pocket park proposed for the South Service Road area adjacent to the Riverside epicenter. Please know that we, the Riverside epicenter and the Word of Faith Family Worship Center are fully supportive of this effort. As you can see from my note below, we must want to see this as a win-win for the community and the families in the area. Given proximity to the bus line, I-20, Six Flags, and the Population Center, it is actually ideal and fits within the scope of services already offered at the Riverside epicenter. In fact, there may be other ideas that may be sparked as a result of this park, including the addition of something like a pickleball court, which would very much fit the motive of up-and-coming sport activities that will provide great exposure for the youth in this area. This is exciting and we stand by, ready to assist as desired. Thank you again for keeping this spark alive. Please let us know if we can assist further. It is always, it is a pleasure to serve. So while there may be some comments that they are not amenable to being a partner, he drafted this email in response to a call that I had with him today to let him know what was transpiring. And he's letting us know as recent as 5:56 PM this evening that they want to be a partner. And so, I'm just saying, with that all being stated, with Sweetwater Mission sending out an email also stating they would like to table this so they can have, so we can have a community discussion. Everybody, every partner is saying, we can table this. Let's have a discussion and talk. I can't, for the life of me, understand why you just, why we just cannot take the time, take the time to follow up with those that have signed on in the project. We actually have one of the proponents of the project that came and met with me earlier, sitting in the audience here. Why not just take the time, go back to those that were originally involved in the scope, who anticipated to see an investment in an area, as you described, may not have the best reputation? You have opportunity to invest in there, in that community, in lockstep with your citizens that are there. I can't perceive why this has to be rushed today and why we can't do that. Like I said, Commissioner, I'm not done speaking.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm not the commissioner for the area. This is in District Four. But I did want all of this to be on the record. I will send the clerk, these matters to be on the record. And I will do still what I can do in relationship with the funding partner, with the fiscal agent and others who signed on and sent letters, to still find a way for us to have a discussion, should it move forward or not? Because the principle of it is, this is about not just doing something for the community, but doing something with them. So I'm not here to, I'm really not going to fight you on this, Commissioner. You, you know, you've already expressed how you want to move forward. But I need to express the amount of investment that has been made in me meeting with the community and having the support of the stakeholders and in the investment of the nonprofits that approached me about this prior to the pandemic.
Okay.
So with that, is there any?
Well, I do have. In the email from Pastor Boyd, did he communicate whether or not the epicenter has changed course to donate the land for parking?
I talked to him today and he said they will be willing to partner with us on parking. That's why he said this.
Okay. When this project was done and I communicated along with our county attorneys and the attorneys for the epicenter, it was made clear at that time that the county would not allow the epicenter to erect their sign into the right-of-way. To which Pastor Boyd responded, oh, there was a miscommunication. I was not aware of that. Therefore, the land will not be donated. There was conversation around that. Pastor Boyd did not express to me at that time or any time before this evening that the epicenter has changed course to donate this land. What I want to be careful, what I want to be careful of, because I feel like, you know, there is this feeling that I don't want people to walk away with that I do not care, I do not give thought or have not given thought to the investment of those that attended this meeting. There was reference made about Sweetwater Mission. And forgive me, guys, that we have to litigate this, but I just have to address some things. But there was reference that Sweetwater Mission changed directors. But the director that recommended that we pull the item, these are her words, because she wasn't familiar. Well, we have emails from her. She was very familiar with the change. In fact, let's see. There was an amendment to the agreement that was sent to her towards the end of last year. I want to say it's December 6th in 2022, to be exact. I want to say it's December 6th in 2022, to be exact. She signed the amendment agreeing to the change, or the amendment to Wallace Park, on January 6th of 2023. So I just find it curious that now she has absolutely no idea what we're talking about, and that we should table it to discuss it, when we have heard John Hancock on the amendment signed in January. So yeah, there is a disconnect, but I'm just not sure where it's coming from. And I'm not going to belabor, and I'm not going to litigate. I just want to make clear my position. And I want to be cautious in that there is not this feeling of division that's going to be created because of the differences of opinions and how this is moving forward. The community will still be well-served. It's a great opportunity for Wallace Park, for the people and the kids that live in that community as well. There is still an opportunity for the community to have a community park. We have a constituent in South Cobb who was just named a master gardener. She and I talked recently about having space in South Cobb for a garden. DOT still has $87,000 left to invest in this garden. So we're not taking anything from anyone. We're making decisions, I'm making decisions, that would benefit all parties, not just focused on the Riverside area. There's an area near Wallace Park that can benefit from having the pitch park. And we can still have our garden on the county access road that will now include parking.
Are there any other comments, Commissioner Campbell?
No, just let's call the question.
Okay. Thank you. With that, again, Sweetwater Mission is a partner to this project. They are our fiscal agent. So this is an agreement with Sweetwater Mission.
Was there a second to calling the question?
I didn't hear a second? And we called the question, there used to be a...
We've already had a motion and a second.
She's calling the question, which means you have to vote on it. All right.
Bill.
All right, if there's a, there's a motion to call a question, then it requires a fourth, fifth vote to be forward with the actual vote on the motion itself, so.
Thank you.
And you can't have any discussion related to it. You cannot have any discussion related to it, so.
To the motion?
To calling the question, yes.
Okay.
Then you move forward with the actual motion and second that's on the table.
Thank you, Bill. So we'll call the question. Thank you. Thank you. So we'll move to our next agenda item, which is for item 12. Excuse me, that was for our consent, excuse me, we're going back to our regular agenda. Just give me a second, please. Thank you. Okay. We are now at our deputy county manager's tab. May I move forward with your first item?
Awesome.
It's our county.
Well, it's under Jimmy, but it's to you. This is for Dentons. Does Dentons not come in?
No, this is for the appointment of our public safety director.
Okay, so we'll move forward with that item next.
Thank you. Chairwoman Commissioners, it is indeed my pleasure to ask you to consider my recommendation to appoint Mr. Mike Register as our Public Safety Agency Director. His extensive career experience has included 22 years in the U.S. Army and 19 years with Cobb County as part of our police department. Following his career with the Cobb County Police Department, Mr. Register served in several leadership and managerial roles with companies supporting federal agencies. He served as the Chief of Police for Clayton County from July until he returned back home to Cobb County to participate as a Director of our police as well in June of 2017. Mike has served as Cobb's Public Safety Director from April 2019 to August 2019, and returned to Cobb County as the Assistant Chief Deputy to Sheriff Craig Owens in May, excuse me, in March of 2021. In August of 2022, he was appointed to the Director of the Georgia Bureau Investigation by Governor Brian Kemp, overseeing approximately 1,200 personnel and managing a $300 million budget. Mr. Register holds a bachelor's degree in accounting and international finance and a master's degree in public administration, and he is pursuing a doctorate degree in public administration and policy. As part of our national surge, and given Mr. Register's extensive experience in the field of law enforcement, it is my recommendation that this board appoint Mr. Mike Register as our Public Safety Director effective July 24, 2023.
Thank you. Our new Public Safety Director, and I'll speak that in advance, is not a stranger here. And I can assure you tonight that this is a decision that we all agreed on. So with that, I make a motion that we appoint our new Public Safety Agency Director.
Second.
Second.
Mike Register.
Everybody's second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Welcome home. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
And can't wait to get, get going. Another buck.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Chairwoman, if it's okay with you, I would like to ask Mr. Register to come up with his wife and flank by his department heads, if you don't mind, so he could have a word to say.
Can we have a vote? Can we have a vote?
Yes, please.
Hurry up.
I guess there's still some question before they do come up here. With that, we've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion from our Commissioners? All right, call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Congratulations.
First, let me just say. First, let me say thank you to all Madam Chair and the Commissioners for the opportunity to come back as the Department of Public Safety Director. It's an honor, and it's a privilege to serve you and the citizens of Cobb County. My beautiful wife's here, my best friend, and she's been like a rock beside me. And what I like to do, I know there are some community members here, Ms. Bonner, Jareen. I'd like to get, if you're in public safety, just come up here with me if you don't mind. Tiffany, turn around, come on back. I know we, I know we've got some of the command staff back there. If you could just come up, and I'd like to get a picture. And I know we got a representative from the Sheriff's Office. I asked Colonel Morris to be here, and he's back there hiding. Come on up, Dwayne. 911, I think you're back there, could you come up? Hey, you know, when I was coming here tonight, I saw a patrol car, and it's got commitment, service, and partnership on the back. When I was the Chief of Police, I actually had that put on all the patrol cars, because I truly believe that public safety is committed to giving the best service that we possibly can to the community, and we also know the value of those partnerships. And I got to tell you, from government on down, you know, everybody in Cobb County government, they're committed to making this county a better place. And I know the men and women who make up our public safety. I know firsthand the cefliz service that they give and the dedication that they show on a daily basis. And I'm just very proud, not to only lead you, but to be part of your team. You know, every day, we put checks in either one of four columns. One column is what have I done, what I didn't do, what I could have done, and what I should have done. And I was talking to Chief Ann Hooser a couple of days ago, and you might think that the most important column is what I did do. But I submit to you that just as important as the column of what I should have done, we're all here for just a snapshot in time. And while we're here for that snapshot in time, let's do our job, and let's make Cobb County a better place for all. And before I stop talking, I just want to say one thing. You know, it's been a hard week for the Cobb County family. I just wanted to ask everyone in here to send your prayers and condolences to the family of Spanky Watkins. He was a detective here for many years, a good friend of mine. And my prayers go out to his family. And also Colonel Jaeger and Cindy Jaeger. Colonel Jaeger works for the Sheriff's Department, and Cindy Jaeger works for, I think, where's Mr. DA at? Mr. DA, come on up. They lost, they lost their 17-year-old daughter. And I heard that her favorite color, Colleen Jaeger, is purple. And I wore this purple tie tonight in remembrance of Colleen Jaeger. And let's take a moment and just sometime this week, and make sure that you send prayers and condolences to the family. And with that being said, I'm happy to be home. I appreciate the opportunity and thank each and every one of you for who you are, what you mean to me as a friend, what you mean to the county as leadership and the relationship that we have. Thank you.
He wants the photo. I don't know how we're gonna do this.
Also, also with us tonight is our former Public Safety Director, Randy Quiter. Thank you for being here today. Commissioners, we can, I don't know, we come up here, yeah. Oh, okay. You two. See how the sausage gets made. Canned it.
When it gets real heated, I'm gonna start it. Come on, fire. Get up here, fire. Come on, Kevin. Cheer.
Make sure you can see Ross, so he can see you.
Yeah, hey, you don't work for us anymore.
Oh, yes, she does.
All right, here we go. Three, two, and somebody goes blinking.
I got one request. Bert and Bruce, take a round. Could you come up? No, come on up. I know you're not dressed for this.
I know.
Neither is Randy.
Is that mic off, so everybody?
I was setting a clock in the morning.
Look at that hair.
It looks good on you.
That balances it out. Here we go. All right, here we go. Three, two, and God, everybody in there, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you saying anything? Well, yeah.
Talking to the floor. Oh. I feel like my numbers have gone off. One second. Just give me one second. Let me find my actual agenda. Okay. All right, our next matter before us is for the Commissioners to adopt a resolution denouncing anti-Semitic activities in Cobb County. And I presume I'll be presenting this item, as we've had some discussion over the activities that have occurred in Cobb County over the past week. In response to that, the Board of Commissioners is saddened by that activity, and particularly the recent demonstration with Nazi flags and inflammatory signage outside of Shabbat of Cobb. We've also had some distribution of anti-Jewish propaganda literature at Cobb County homes and other neighborhoods across Georgia. While we recognize a group's right to free speech and the right to peacefully protest, we denounce such actions and speech that threaten members of our community. And we want to make sure that it is incumbent upon us for Cobb to remain a safe and welcoming place. So with that, we have the following resolution. This is a resolution denouncing recent anti-Semitic activities in Cobb County that attempt to spread hatred, bigotry, and disinformation against minority and religious communities, showing that such hatred, bigotry, and disinformation do not belong in Cobb County and must be confronted. Whereas a small group of protesters held a demonstration outside of Shabbat of Cobb Synagogue waving Nazi flags and holding signs spreading false and inflammatory information, and whereas this incident comes on the heels of anti-Jewish propaganda flyers being distributed at Cobb County homes and neighborhoods across Georgia, including Atlanta, Cartersville, Sandy Springs, Dunwoody's, and Athens. And whereas the Board of Commissioners recognize that any group has the right to free speech and the ability to protest, demonstrate, and distribute information regarding its beliefs, no matter how reprehensible to others. And whereas when such speech threatens any person, minority group, or religious community, residents should respond by educating others with voices and actions as loud as those spreading the hateful speech. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby denounce the actions of those who threaten members of our community, attempt to shatter the belief that Cobb is a safe and welcoming place, and call for all to stand against their hate speech and attempts to divide our county. This the 27th day of June 2023. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Summled.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. Okay. We are now at our deputy county manager's agenda item.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. This, tonight's been a prime example of a tab being hijacked. I had the tab, and everybody got hijacked with all these.
I tried to throw you up there, Jimmy.
That's okay. Willfully acquiesce. Our item this evening is for the Board to approve a contract with Dentons USA LLP for state and federal consulting services. On May 9th, the Board approved the top three ranked firms to complete this work for the county. Our negotiations with the top-ranked firm, which is Dentons USA, resulted in an agreed-upon scope and fee. The scope of work included in the contract documents detailed... scope and fee. The scope of work included in the contract documents details how this firm will assist the county in our lobbying efforts in both Washington as well as at the State Capitol. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Denton's USA LLP for state and federal consulting services in an amount not to exceed $204,000, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
With that, we are now at our DA's tab. Is anyone here from the DA's office? All right, our DA is still with us. Thank you.
First, I want to thank the Board on passing the resolution. It's important to all of us that we do feel included in our community and that we do have a safe place to live and stay. We're here today to approve, to ask for the approval of a contract with the Department of Human Services and the Cobb Judicial Circuit to provide child support services to the citizens of Cobb County. Our recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners approve the fiscal year 2024 contract with DHS in the amount of $1,405,600 with an approved supplemental contribution of $699,269 to the program and authorize the transfer of all personal forms, personnel from Unit G 373 to Unit 374, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further designate the District Attorney as a signature authority for all the documents related to the on-calling Department of Human Services agreements with the District Attorney's Office for this fiscal year.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, DA Burrow.
Thank you.
We are now at our DOT Regular Agenda Tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Drew Essler, DOT. The Department has eight items for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Smyrna in an amount not to exceed $233,678.34 for resurfacing on Dixie Avenue, Resurfacing Contract 2023-3 Local Roads South, Project Number B 2908, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay. And we have Districts 2 and 3. Commissioner Richardson?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. On that same project, our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to Resurfacing Contract 2023-3 Local Roads South with Blunt Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $483,658.88 for resurfacing on Dixie Avenue, Project Number B 2908, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right. Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of agreement with Cobb County Marietta Water Authority in an amount not to exceed $1,623,284 for resurfacing. Cobb County Marietta Water Authority, Project Number B 2951, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advance Sports Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $720,897.55 for Bill Murdock at Walton High School, Project Number B 2802, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution committing to a safety goal of zero deaths and serious injuries as a result of crashes on public roads in Cobb County and adopting a 5% annual reduction target for all safety performance measures and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Safe Streets for All Grant Program, application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for implementation of the Multi-Corridor Safety Improvements Project, designate Department representatives for all matters associated with the SS4A grant application, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a Cobb Framework Agreement with the Town Center Community Improvement District for Preliminary Engineering Design of Big Shanty Road Widening, Cobb County Project Number B 2431, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item tonight is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a project framework agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Preliminary Engineering of Big Shanty Road Widening, Cobb County Project B 2431, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Once again, Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. We need Commissioner Burl. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. We are now moving on to our Support Services tab.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. My item tonight, number 34, is a joint item with DOT to recommend that property be declared surplus and to authorize an agreement for purchase and sale of 3.789 plus or minus acres located at 4,600 Atlanta Rose, Smyrna, Georgia. On February 7, 2022, the Property Advisory Commission agreed to recommend surplusing and marketing the property. Working with McWhorter Realty Partners, the county's contracted commercial real estate broker, the property was marketed without an asking price. Subsequently, a call for highest and best offers was made. After presentations, the best overall offer was selected for further negotiations. The sale of this property would bring additional revenue to the county. We are requesting that the Board of Commissioners declare the property surplus and authorize an agreement for purchase and sale for the sale of 3.789 plus or minus acres of property located at 4,600 Atlanta Road, Smyrna, Georgia, to Florinoya Development Group LLC for the price of $7,550,060 to $13,650,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the attached agreement for purchase and sale. We are also requesting the Board authorize the corresponding budget transactions and to authorize the Chairwoman to sign the agreement for purchase and sale and any other necessary documents to implement the foregoing purposes.
Commissioner Richardson?
So moved.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? Call the, yes, Commissioner Gamble.
I cannot support this agenda item while I support the county selling surplus property. I cannot support this one because the ultimate price that the county will get for the property is dependent on a future rezoning, which is dependent on the number of units, which is shown in Schedule 2 of this agenda item. To me, that makes this not a, I find it to be a conflict for future decisions, and therefore I cannot support it.
Sharon, if you can address that, if this is in a typical occurrence, or if this has been our practice?
No, this is, so for us in Support Services, zoning and sale of property are two different processes. We basically, DOT and Support Services for this, and then I'm going to defer to the county attorney after I say this, about the little portion of what we did. DOT and Support Services work with the county's commercial real estate broker to market and sell the property based on their market analysis, and they're here tonight, of similar properties, and their expert recommendation during negotiations with potential buyers to ensure offers were in line with fair market value. We sell the property. We don't consider the, what the use of the property is. That would be handled during a zoning process, which would still have to occur with the purchase and sale agreement that we have. The property would still have to come before zoning, et cetera, and that process would occur separately. So, Bill, I'll defer to her conflict of interest with you.
Of course, the Board has a duty to sell property to the highest reasonable bidder. In this particular instance, the bidder suggested various formulas by which they would be able to sell basically an offer price based upon how many units they were able to gather. Hence, we have the 7.5 million up to $13.6 million based upon how the zoning ultimately comes out. It's not, the price is contingent upon not a particular outcome, but whatever the Board would feel like when you're full discretion, you're able to do under the zoning. And that would, that would then result in the contract price. This is the best way to be able to get the highest reasonable price for the property, which is part of your duty as the Board.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioner Richardson, I saw your hand.
Yeah, it was really around the clarification because I did want to make sure. I know I had a bunch of questions regarding this process. It's a, it is a practice that's defined by law, but it's not something that frequently occurs. So just to gain that clarification, I think was critical. And certainly making sure that there wasn't any, because I know like I, none of the members of the commission participated in any calculation of that negotiation or what have you. That's something that's done separately through parties that do that job. But the part where we play a role is in understanding the zoning, just as any other zoning application, which then affords the community ample time, ample opportunity to participate, as would any other zoning hearing. And that was my understanding.
That's correct. Otherwise, you would be selling the property at obviously something that's going to be rezoned at a much higher price, and that you would not be fulfilling your duties to get your highest possible price for surplus property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burl.
Since this was initially purchased under SLOST, it says that $12,968.12 will go back into SLOST?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Finish. I'm sorry.
Is that the amount that will go back into SLOST?
Yes, ma'am.
Or excess of that?
No, that will go back into SLOST. When we sell a surplus property, it is our practice, if there are specialty funds used, whether that be SLOST or other types of specialty funds, that those, that amount that was used to purchase that property would go back into that specific fund. So anytime we sell property, similarly it was Corner Road, a portion of Corner Road is not just to purchase the property, but if we improved a building on the property, that many dollars would go back into SLOST when we sell the property with the building. So that would go back into SLOST.
Is, does, is it designated to DOT parks? Does it matter, I mean, does it matter what?
This was a DOT, this was a DOT SLOST project.
Okay, so it will go back to DOT?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Unless the Board, unless the Board chose to do it differently, but that's where we'd normally do it.
It has to go back to DOT, Bill? Or anywhere? But as long as this is SLOST?
That has been the practice of the Board. I've not heard you try to do anything differently, and we've not researched anything differently. It goes back to where it was actually funded from initially, yes.
Commissioner Gamble.
But I think we need to understand in order to refund the SLOST the full amount, we would have to approve over 300 units per the chart.
But you would only refund what we sold. If we sold it for less, then the entire amount would go back to SLOST.
There's no obligation to recover it.
The way we do it, there's no obligation for that. There's a fairly long, if you, I know you all have read the contract, due diligence process to allow the process the county follows in zoning to take its normal course in this, in this purchase and sale agreement. Yes, ma'am.
And from what I understood, highest and best offer was regardless of what the unit count is. If it's 300, they have a highest and best. If it's 100, it's highest and best. If it's whatever, it's highest and best from that calculation to fulfill that duty.
It is highest and best. Understand, when we look at its highest and best use, there are certain limitations put on this property by DOT, and DOT could address those about ingress and egress. So there are certain things that you could not put on this. We did meet with community development. We knew what, this, this property was a truck stop on an interstate, I-285. When we met with community development and DOT, there were various eligible uses for this, and that's one reason we looked at. There were some things that would not work due to the fact of the traffic patterns and what was legal per, not legal, but acceptable to DOT for ingress, egress into the property. So when you looked at those uses, then yes, this was highest and best.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this item? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. We'll call the question. The motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll go to our next agenda item.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our item this evening is to request the Board of Commissioners approve a sole-source contract with Infax Incorporated to upgrade the Infax Court Docket System and implement a system support agreement for Superior State and Magistrate Courts in an amount not to exceed $82,138. 2022 SLOST Project B 0010, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final staff item for tonight?
Started it off and finished it.
Yes, I like that bookend.
Good evening, County, good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Property Management has one item this evening. Property Management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a two-part design bill contract with Catamount Constructors, Inc., with the initial phase of the contract valued at $2,440,564, which includes the design costs, project fees, project general conditions for the construction of the Public Safety Firing Range located at 2435 East West Connector Ostel, 2016 SLOST Program X 1050-C and 2022 SLOST Program B 10500. And also authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Tre.
Thank you, ma'am.
We are now at our second public comment.
The first speaker is Kevin Cutliffe.
Hi there. My name is Kevin Cutliffe. I live in District 2 and have lived here since...
To have some movement, let's just wait a quick second. We have some people. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, so my name is Kevin. I live in District 2, lived here since I was a child. I'm 21 years old, and I'm an exclusive bike rider in the county. I chose to use an e-bike for my transportation instead of a car for its environmental, physical, and practical purposes. It's helped me go grocery shopping, meet friends, and go to work. However, due to the way the roads are designed, I often do not feel safe as a rider. I've been yelled at to get on the sidewalk, even though that's illegal, had people throw things at me, and ultimately have been hit once. Many of my friends who are my age express interest in joining me as an e-bike rider, but ultimately are scared of the dangers that I've experienced firsthand. I wanted to thank the Board for approving the safety plan, as I hope it will improve conditions for bike riders alongside walking pedestrians such as myself with better road designs, dedicated bike lanes, and bring more aspiring riders my age, those who are now able to vote out of their cars and on, onto the road. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Matt Stegall.
Good evening.
My name is Matt Stegall. I am a member of the Trans advisory Board. I have two things I want to talk about tonight. The first one, just real quick, I just want to thank the Board for approving the safety action plan. That is honestly a historic moment in this county to allow us to focus on reducing the deaths and serious injuries of all users of the road. And so, and that includes pedestrians, bikers, transit users, everyone. And there's a lot of vulnerable users of our road, and I noticed that there's sidewalk gaps and crosswalks aren't where they should be and many other things. And hopefully this, this starts the process to ensure that all of our roads are designed safely and with all, all users in mind. The second topic I wanted to discuss... The second topic I wanted to discuss, had a lot of discussion earlier tonight, regarding the South Cobb Pocket Park and really just the overall vision, the original vision and just kind of my experience. I, like, I was involved in the initial conversations of it. I have a deep love of soccer. I, I know soccer in the streets for years. They're a great nonprofit. They build soccer pitches on transit stations with MARTA. They're internationally recognized for this as a great opportunity to bring people together. And yeah, it just started as an idea, and we were able to win a grant from the Georgia 100 program as well as a grant from AmeriCorps to put a community garden at that location. And this was all back in, I was just looking at some of the timeframes, October of 2020 is when we learned that we had received these grants. And we had a public, a public meeting in June, and in, you know, I mean, some of, like, the comments were overwhelmingly, not really just the soccer pitch, but also, you know, the community garden, the walking trail, exercise stations, all those things were heavily prioritized. And really, we had, it was 40 respondents to a public survey, and it was overwhelmingly positive, people saying they'd use it regularly. You know, it was definitely a need for a park in that area. I understand there were some complications with the mini soccer, you know, soccer pitch and everything at that location. It's unfortunate that, you know, the parking lot and there are parking requirements and negotiations with the possible partner in that case. But at the end of the day, that area is a, both a food desert when it comes to grocery stores, as well as a park desert when it just comes to outdoor recreation. And there needs to be something there.
I'm in District 3.
Like, you know, I, I'm a big soccer fan. I would love for the original vision to, to come to fruition there.
At a Cobb GOP breakfast last month, a prominent Cobb resident who actually spoke today and
And yeah, I would say, I was informed of the changes over a year ago, and my exact response
the head of the Cobb GOP were seen lamenting the urbanization of our county, and that's
when I was informed of the changes was, and I will actually read it real fast, sorry.
the word that they used, in particular around efforts to invest in public transportation. The resident talked about living in the suburbs to be around his own kind, while Ms. Grubbs
Thank you for, you know, like informing me, but I have to say, I'm disappointed in this
speaks to how Cobb was built smartly with the idea of keeping us as a suburban county.
decision, especially with zero public input on the matter. This park was a unique opportunity for the county and the South Cobb community to turn
What they're talking about is not smart planning, it is redlining, a practice the FHA, FHA
a previous road right-of-way into a community pocket park, and it received significantly positive public feedback at the open house.
used for decades to legally prohibit black families from buying homes in counties like
The intent of the grant money wasn't to add a feature to an existing park, but to combine
Cobb. It wasn't that those families couldn't afford the homes, mortgages were expressly prohibited
the grant funds into an opportunity that impacted a community that is in a park desert
to them in certain areas.
and is one of the federally recognized census tracts for opportunity.
It's a major reason why we have a huge wealth gap between white and black families in this
Much of this community is within walking distance or utilize transit with the bus
country.
stop right in front of the property.
And this didn't happen hundreds of years ago.
So again, that was just the original vision of the park from day one, and it would have
Many of those in this room, some who left, were alive when this was still going on.
been great to see that.
I bring this up because it is just one example of how systemic racism affects people to
And yeah, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you, never forget.
this day and that the framework of critical race theory allows us to examine these disparities
Michael Garza.
and explore solutions to end them. But I understand that CRT might be too complex for some here, so I'm going to present an analogy for a common issue that comes before the commission. Let's say the community comes before this body and requests that the county study ways to improve a particularly dangerous stretch of winding road. People who live there come out and talk about the large number of fatalities as a result of that road. Rather than let the Board study and weigh the impact, a group of people in another community come out against the study. They say that those in the other neighborhoods should figure it out themselves because ultimately their safety is their personal responsibility. But the residents counter that, yes, while they do what they can to take great care in riding their bikes down the road or crossing the street, the lack of speed limit signs or stoplights still make the stretch of road more dangerous than it should be. The people in the other group raise their voices again and say that if the county helps that community get safer roads, the county is discriminating against them. Why won't the county do a study in their neighborhood? But the residents point out that the roads where that group live are in perfect grids with bike lanes and speed humps around a beautiful green space in the center. All they're asking for is to make their neighborhood safer. And yet again, the people in the other group are not satisfied. They point out the words of a great civil engineer who dreamed of a future in which roads and modes of transportation are so well thought out that there will be no need for speed limits or stop signs. And the residents say, well, that is all well and good for the future, but this dangerous stretch of road exists now. And they also point out that the civil engineer was killed on this very stretch of road while himself trying to get the county to fix the problem. Now, before those people who come here to rail against the AI think I'm picking on them, I'm not. All of us are private citizens, and we ultimately have little power in the decisions made in this county. But the viewpoints that are presented here do mirror those of decision makers. We have all seen that our county will soon become the first district in Georgia to terminate an educator under the three new laws passed to censor teachers in the classroom. Her only crime was to read a book and create a lesson plan around the book's message of acceptance of oneself and others, an exercise in which students discussed the importance of recognizing and accepting people as individuals and then allowed them to self-reflect on how they might be perceived as different from their peers. Her firing will not just have a detrimental effect on the wonderful teachers who do the work of making their classrooms inclusive for all, but we have to recognize the harm to students themselves. Think about the toll on the mental health of students already due to a variety of factors and then add to that the psychological scars of racism and bigotry. And now it is compounded by the feeling of being invalidated and undervalued by school administrators. We also have commissioners here who feel that their side in these discussions is not being heard while they also choose not to participate in the discussions. Rather than proposing alternative solutions for mode equity in the county, they refuse to acknowledge that it is even an issue. In doing so, they have made clear that their side is acceptance of the way things are now. But that is something that we do not accept, and I commend the majority in this body who have provided us with a vision of a better future, and I support your efforts to enact policies that promote a sense of belonging to all of those that live in the county. Thank you.
Tyler Bigler.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Staff. Tyler Bigler, I live in District 3. Just read this book in the last week, and it has kind of blown my mind. There's some concepts here that I've been familiar with for a long time. It's only 230 pages, and I have five minutes, so I think I can get through it, so let me start right now. No, I'm just going to read a couple snippets that I think are applicable to the safe streets and safety plan that we just, that was just approved. So first, a couple definitions, a road, I want to talk about a road. A road is a high-speed connection between two productive places. A street is a platform for building community wealth in those places. Now, you've, we're all hard road in the streets, we might use them interchangeably, but I think those two definitions and making them separate and different gives them a better purpose and gives, defines their value. Now we get to the strode. The strode is a street road hybrid, is the futon of the transportation system. A futon is an uncomfortable couch that converts into an uncomfortable bed, something that performs two functions that does, but does neither well. A strode tries to be both a street and a road, providing both mobility and access, yet it fails miserably at both. Strods are the most dangerous environment we routinely build in our cities and municipalities. If we applied a fraction of the level of scrutiny to their design, that we have to design such items as baby carriers, lawn mowers or beach toys, we would have made radical reforms decades ago. Thousands of people die each year on strods with countless more maimed and permanently injured. This happens for reasons that are not difficult to discern. Strods facilitate traffic speeds that ensure a high frequency of violent collisions. A collision with a change in speed of 30 miles per hour can result in a severe traumatic brain injury for the driver or passenger, which is a level four on the abbreviated injury scale. Ask DOT what that means. The only way to have meaningful reductions in speed and a significant impact on the number of crashes is through geometric change. The design of the street needs to change to, to prompt people to drive slower. For streets, where we platforms for, for creating community wealth and value, for streets, we need complexity in order to build a productive place. Traffic needs to flow at a neighborhood speed, 15 miles or less, miles per hour or less is optimum, to make human habitat that is safe and productive. To achieve this on a street, the street design needs to shift drivers from the passive awareness that we all have when we drive to the mental state of heightened engagement that you would find on, in lower speeds, more complex environments. Where traffic engineers have done a brilliant job recognizing the limits of human cognition and adjusting speed limits on roads to reflect the 85th percentile speed, that's the measurement is used to determine speed limits, they now need to apply that same insights to streets. The only difference is that instead of using the 85th percentile speed to adjust the speed limit on streets, we need to use the measured speed to adjust the design. Where drivers are traveling too fast, the geometry, the design of the street needs to change and keep changing until a safe 85th percentile speed is achieved. Again, I wish I could read this whole book to the group here because it is fascinating and gave me really good, deeper insights into the way that we build our transportation systems. And I'd like to note, too, it's, it's not attributing malice to anyone in government or to DOT or engineers. It is, it talks about the history of our car-dependent design post-World War II. Anyway, I'm going too deep into the book now, but it is, it is just a, is engineers trying to do good work and improve safety, but I think along the way, the, the intent was lost and it was safety for cars and allowing high speeds at the detriment of the people living in places. Thank you.
The next speaker is Larry Darrell. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, my name is Larry Darnell. I live at 375 Hotchkiss Lane, Marietta, Georgia. It's in the Longleaf Battle Park subdivision of Barrett Parkway. It's near the intersection of Barrett Parkway and Burnt Hickory Roads. My wife and I were the first to move into this development. We moved in in November 2017. Our neighborhood is now 95% complete, with 65 of 71 homes being occupied. I'm here this evening speaking for our HOA, and I want to address public safety as it relates to traffic on Barrett Parkway. Seems like we're hearing a lot about safety and traffic tonight, and I'm happy to hear that. Specifically between Dallas Highway and Burnt Hickory Roads is our concern. In the five and a half years since my wife and I moved in, there's been a significant increase in traffic and an increase in speed on Barrett Parkway. It makes it very difficult for all of our neighborhood homeowners as well as visitors to safely enter and exit our neighborhood. We come tonight to make you aware of a few of our major concerns. First is speeding. It seems that speeding has increased as traffic has increased. Speeding on Barrett Parkway impacts us safely entering and exiting our neighborhood, and people seem to have no regard for the 45 mile per hour speed limit signs as they travel much faster than that. The second is the ability for us to make a safe U-turn from North Brown Barrett Parkway in the Burnt Hickory Road intersection. If we're traveling north on Barrett Parkway from Dallas Highway, we must go to Burnt Hickory Road, do a U-turn to get to our neighborhood. Cobb DOT at our request installed a sign on Burnt Hickory Road that says "Traffic Must Yield to U-Turn Vehicles," but that sign is rarely obeyed. Drivers turning right off Burnt Hickory onto Barrett Parkway are looking, looking left and rarely look at people making the U-turn before they proceed into the intersection. There have been numerous near-miss accidents trying to make this U-turn safely. The third is if we exit our neighborhood wishing to go north toward Cobb Parkway, we, we must exit our neighborhood heading south on Barrett Parkway and make yet another U-turn at Rocky Ridge Road. At Rocky Ridge Road, there's no light or signage of any kind indicating who has the right-of-way, causing confusion for all drivers and rendering a safe turn very difficult to make. So our quest tonight is that the Board of Commissioners work with Cobb DOT and the Cobb County Police Department to come up with ways to improve these traffic safety issues. I have been made aware that Cobb DOT is currently doing some study related to this matter, but we're not sure of what all the DOT is looking at. So we would like to make the following recommendations that could have an immediate impact on driver's safety and cost the county very little money. First is obviously more speed control on Barrett Parkway. That's a must, not only for our safety, but for all who travel on Barrett Parkway. Placement of officers running radar would be ideal. If that is not possible, maybe you could look at cameras being added to, to help with speed control. Second, we think it would be good to add signage at the corner of Burnt Hickory Road and Barrett Parkway that reads "No Turn on Red." This would allow individuals traveling north on Barrett Parkway to safely do a U-turn to southbound Barrett Parkway traffic. The traffic on Burnt Hickory Road would be forced to stop rather than simply yield, which they usually do not do. The third, we think it would be a significant impact is to install flexible lane delineators on the southbound traffic lanes of Barrett Parkway. This would be north of the Burnt Hickory Road intersection, separate the right-turning traffic from the straight-through traffic, because there are numerous vehicles that rapidly change lanes at the last minute, moving from the turning lane into the straight-going lanes, and we've had very many near-miss accidents and actually have had some accidents as a result of that. And then the fourth thing is we think it'd be good to add signage at the intersection of Rocky Ridge and Barrett Parkway that would give direction to who has the right-of-way so that we could make safe U-turns at that intersection. We thank you for your time and for listening to us, and we want you to know that we're available if you would like any other information from us.
Thank you, sir.
Your time's up.
Your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Craig Harford.
Well, hold on, sir. Before you leave, Commissioner Gamble, did you want to respond?
Yes, I can respond, and I know I've been in communication with several members from Longleaf subdivision. As far as the changes back in 2011 in our SPOLOST program, we had funding put in there to, and I've heard to say these words, the Michigan left, which I don't like that term, but the county essentially put those in, but we never put the lights in to then put them into use because at that time, there wasn't a need. It wasn't warranted by our studies. So what DOT is doing right now in the study is they're going back and studying to see if we need to complete that project by putting in the lights, which would essentially eliminate the left turn there at Burnt Hickory and Barrett Parkway, and essentially those who would want to turn left would have to go down and use the Michigan left, we got to find a better word for that, to make their left-hand turn, and then they would only be able to turn right. So we would be essentially eliminating the U-turn from that intersection. I agree with you as far as individuals using that third lane, that's supposed to be the right-hand turn only when you're going south on Barrett to turn onto Burnt Hickory. A lot of people do use that as a passing lane. Our officers are out there doing speed control. I see them routinely. The trouble getting them closer to Longleaf is their sight distance, because when they do speed control, they are governed by their sight distance, and based on how your subdivision sits coming off of that curve, they don't have the sight distance, so they usually sit down just north of Burnt Hickory, and you'll see a bunch of people usually pulled over there. So they are doing that, and DOT is doing that. As far as the changes back in 2011 in our SPOS program, we had funding put in there to, and I've heard them say these words, the Michigan lefts, which I don't like that term, but the county essentially put those in, but we never put the lights in to then put them into use because at that time, there wasn't a need. It wasn't warranted by our studies. So what DOT is doing right now in the study is they're going back and studying to see if we need to complete that project by putting in the lights, which would essentially eliminate the left turn there at Burnt Hickory and Barrett Parkway, and essentially those who would want to turn left would have to go down and use the Michigan left, we've got to find a better word for that, to make their left-hand turn, and then they would only be able to turn right. So we would be essentially eliminating the U-turn from that intersection. I agree with you as far as individuals using that third lane, that's supposed to be the right-hand turn only when you're going south on Barrett to turn onto Burnt Hickory. A lot of people do use that as a passing lane. Our officers are out there doing speed control. I see them routinely. The trouble getting them closer to Longleaf is their sight distance, because when they do speed control, they are governed by their sight distance, and based on how your subdivision sits coming off of that curve, they don't have the sight distance, so they usually sit down just north of Burnt Hickory, and you'll see a bunch of people usually pulled over there. So they are doing that, and DOT is doing that study. So I hope I answered your questions. I will get with DOT about seeing how we can restrict that right, but if we enact the left turn light, I'm not sure how that's going to impact, you know, drivers going from there to get into that lane. So that'll be something we'll have to look at. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll have our next speaker.
Good evening. Again, my name's Craig Harfoot, and I know about the DOT studies and where they want to put a light when they're building the thing, but I'll tell you, you've got to be forward-thinking, and if you build more density, you've got to have more lights, and it slows down traffic. Well, I guess that fits in with what they're saying. But my big recommendation is go to Hilton Head and see the way they do roads and bikes. They make the bikes and pedestrians stop for the cars at all the driveways and all the hotels, and just check it out. Next thing. And it's a slow speed limit. It's like 30, 25, you know? And these are off the back. The main roads, they got the bike paths way off, you know, but you've got to plan ahead for that stuff. And Dentons, well, I saw you got, you spent over $100,000 for a study just to get Sam Olens to represent you in Washington and the legislature, but you still didn't just say it, but you approved it tonight, and he gets over $200,000. So what I'm going to say is, why did you need the study for that? I mean, that was like, you're going to do it anyway, so why would you do the study? And Dentons, they're all former attorney generals. I mean, that's their big bragging point. I got that, but seems like I'm, you know, coming back to the trough and sticking your nose in again. Now, the next thing I wanted to talk about was the study about the facilities. So you're going to hire a consultant, and then he's going to look at the roofs, and he's going to look at the AC, and he's going to look at all this stuff, but if you've got a department, I mean, I did 12 restaurants in Buckhead with one other guy, and we did all this stuff, and the whole deal was, yeah, we know which roof needs done, which air conditioner needs replaced, and you get bids, and you save a whole lot of money, and I don't understand why you need some, I mean, you've got a big department, and you've got more staff than we ever had, and small business people don't have that kind of money, you know? And this is where you can save money. And as far as the item about the getting the AAA thing, and you've got to have so much in reserves, well, I told you, the economy is not going to let you do what you want. It's going to go, they're talking global recession next year. I mean, all the stuff that's going on in the world, and I've sent you all the stuff I'm reading, I don't pull it out of thin air, and these are all, you know, major publications I'm getting my information from. And I hope you have time to at least look at the headlines, you know, because it tells a story. And, you know, I don't come up here because I think, you know, I can merrily go along my way, and, but what was said about, like the lady with the baby that, you know, is going to be evicted, well, I talked to the tax assessor's office, and it was about, did we raise assessments on all the apartments? He goes, yeah. So right there, all the rents are going up. And the whole reason for why we got a surplus is that, you know, COVID, they printed way more money than we printed for any war that we ever had, and it caused the prices to go up. When you print money, you cause inflation, and the only safety valve we had was you being able to say, well, that's a windfall because it's cheap money and it's a short-lived thing, because if you stick with the assessments and everyone's getting hammered on groceries and fuel and this and that, the whole thing will collapse. And so you've got to be forward-thinking. You've got to be wise with your money. I'm, you know, I'm just me, but I'm like, what do you call it? I can't even think of the word. I live well below my means. That's, you know, I guess that's Scottish ancestry, but the whole thing is, I've self-funded everything. If the county collects the taxes as they're put in escrow, you don't need to borrow money. You don't have to worry about a AAA. But the other thing you've got to do is not build stuff with bond money, like the Braves' 150 million bond.
Mr. Harfoot, your time's up. That was the last public speaker. Sherwood.
We are now at our appointments tab, and we have one announcement from Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. I would like to announce the appointment of Susan Hampton to the Neighborhood Safety Commission, and she replaces Rabbi Larry Cernovitz, and I'd like to thank him for his service and dedication to our county.
Thank you, Commissioner. That now takes us to the Commissioner's public address. We will begin with Commissioner Gamble once our slides queue up.
Okay, Ryan, in less than 12 hours, we will have our next annual walk and talk with the Commissioner. It will take place tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. at the Alatuna Creek Park. This is a monthly event, and it's designed to promote community engagement and support healthy living. Alatuna Creek Park is located at 5510 Old Stylesborough Road in Acworth, and we look forward to seeing you in the morning. Public Service Director Dr. Jutan Gibson and I are gearing up to compete in Cobb's first-ever pickleball challenge between Cobb County Government Directors and officials on Friday, August 4th. We are playing for the charity Meals on Wheels. You can play, too, by backing your favorite player. Your votes will go towards helping Meals on Wheels. May the best team win. It is also my understanding that we also have another competitor, Commissioner Sheffield, who is teaming up against Communications Director Ross Cavett. The question is...
I'm putting my money on money.
But I'm wondering if the GoPro would count as the third member of the team, so let the fun begin. Please all get involved. All proceeds, again, will go to our Senior Services Meals on Wheels. And again, happy 4th of July. Thousands of people are injured yearly during the 4th of July holiday while using fireworks. Here are some fireworks safety tips so you and your family can celebrate safely. If you choose to light fireworks, do it safely and be considerate of your neighbors. In Cobb County, fireworks must end at midnight on July 3rd and July 4th, or you are violating the noise ordinance. Keep a bucket of water or garden hose handy in case of fire or other mishap, and light fireworks one at a time, then move back quickly. You can check out the 4th of July events that are happening in Acworth, Marietta, and Kennesaw in my newsletter this week, and enjoy a safe, happy holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to District 2.
Happy 4th of July. Tuesday, July 4th, county offices will be closed in observance of Independence Day. There are several events happening across Cobb County to celebrate the 4th of July. Have a safe and fun holiday. So news from the office, we've got the Lower Roswell, Lower Roswell Road Open House. We'll be joined with Commissioner Burrell as well, but please join us Thursday, June 29th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at East Cobb Library for an in-person open house to discuss the concept designs for the Lower Roswell Road project. The purpose of this meeting will be to inform the public of the design changes made since last year to remove the in-street bike lanes while providing pedestrian and bike accommodations with a multi-use trail. This is an open house, not a town hall. Community members can drop in anytime between 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. to view the displays and speak directly with DOT staff to make sure that their feedback and comments are heard. Comment cards will also be available to provide formal feedback, and I'll do my best to capture what gets brought up in that, in those sessions as well, so that we can make sure that people are aware of that content. Family Day, Cobb Family Day at the Fishing Rodeo. Please join us at Hyde Farm Park from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. for a family day. We will be offering a viewing of the Cobb Parks Fishing Rodeo Competition, so we're kind of tagging along. Compliments to our East Cobb Cabinet Chair, Kevin. You can touch a truck with Cobb Fire and Police, cooking demonstrations from the UGA Extensions Office, story walk with Cobb Libraries, a scavenger hunt with myself, Hyde Farm tour, and garden volunteer opportunities. Those who would like to participate in the Cobb Parks Fishing Rodeo must register in advance. Please go to cobbcounty.org/park to register for the Fishing Rodeo Competition. Capstone Internship kickoff, so you all heard me recruiting for Capstones for interns, and you can see our list of, I believe, 21, and we're excited to announce the kickoff of the summer Capstone internship. Our interns will be working on projects and initiatives while learning more about local government. Please join us in welcoming these interns, and you'll get a chance to actually see what they were able to produce at the showcase in September. New cabinet members, we're excited to announce we have added two new cabinet members joining our community cabinet. Malik Tan joins us as the youth cabinet seat, and Natalie Rutledge will join us as the educational cabinet seat. And from the community, VR headset experience, experience our planet like you've never experienced it before. Join us at Vining's Library on Thursday, June 29th, from 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. to travel around the world. Learn, discover through VR experiences. Try gaming as never before by immersing yourself in a 3D environment. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We have a new adoption with our Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Program. This past weekend, for a total of 240 since the start of the program, Mr. Jones here adopted this spunky Chihuahua, and we're grateful to him for supporting our program and also for his six years of service to the U.S. Navy. There are lots of great animals looking for their forever home. If you're a veteran, the adoption is free, and we also have specials running throughout June. Dogs 30 pounds and more, and all cats can be adopted for just $30. You can view the available pets and find out more information at cobbcounty.org/pets. We had our first presentation of the budget at work session today, and the three meetings are Tuesday, July 11th for public hearing, 9:00 a.m. at our BOC meeting, Tuesday, July 18th, a special Cobb meeting at 6:30, and Tuesday, July 27th at 7:00 p.m. at our BOC meeting, and the budget and mileage will both be adopted on the 27th. Fishing rodeos coming, July 8th, Hyde Farm, July 16th, Lost Mountain Park, July 22nd, Ebenezer Downs Park, and July 29th, the Fur Family Park. All you have to do is go to cobbcounty.org/parks to register. It's a great event, and we hope you all come out, and especially July 22nd to Ebenezer So I promised the CID director I would do this tonight. We had our ribbon cutting today for Aviation Park. And this is the ribbon, and this is the CID logo. Aviation Park opened in November of 2017 as a collaboration between the Town Center Community Improvement District and Cobb County Government to convert nearly three acres of underutilized vacant property into a themed environmental for all ages to enjoy. The park features open green space, a STEM playground, an airplane-shaped climbing structure, a pavilion, restrooms, facilities in the shape of a tower. I thought it was in the pictures, but it's not. It was created in alignment with the Georgia Standards of Excellence. The exhibits are now a free outdoor field trip and homeschooling destination for students to complete with a teacher packet for K-5 students. A huge thank you to Town Center CID, Town Center Alliance, Cobb Parks, and Cobb County Airport for their contributions and partnership. So Michael Brantley was there with me today, Drew was there from DOT, and we had our CID meeting first, and then we all went out to the park. Carl Van Hagel came from the airport, and it was a great completion of the park, so it's all finished. The kiosks tell the history of aviation in Cobb. In the bottom-right picture, the two ladies on the left and the two ladies on the right, their fathers were, are on one of the panels, they were 30-year employees at Lockheed. So it was really interesting to learn all about this. So thank you, Town Center, CID, and Alliance. This is hot. We had a pickleball tournament sponsored by Northeast Cobb Business Association, and with the help of Michael and Parks at Jim Miller Park a couple Fridays ago, and to raise money for the sheriff for a canine. And we're also raising money with a raffle for the Cobb Veterans Memorial, which is a county park as well. So we have, we'll have two drawings in July for a $250 gift card to any of the Marietta Family Restaurants that you can see here below the logos, two drawings for $250 gift cards, and the tickets are $10 each, or three for 25. And you can see me afterwards if you'd like to buy a raffle ticket, and it does support the Cobb Veterans Memorial. On Saturday, June 17th, it was a bittersweet day, we closed Gritters Library, but we're looking forward to the new and improved gritters. So we just wanted to show some pictures of a great event. Mountain View is the closest library that patrons will go to during the closure and new building construction. Happy 4th of July. County offices will be closed on Tuesday, July 4th in observance of the Independence Day holiday, and also because Planning Commission is normally the first Tuesday due to the holiday, Planning Commission will, the zoning hearing will be held at 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, July 5th. So have a safe and happy 4th.
Congratulations to the SAE School for the official grand opening of the mini-pitch soccer field donation on June 17th by the Atlanta United Community Fund. The initiative is part of a community funds Georgia 100 campaign, which aims to construct up to 100 mini pitches in under-resourced communities across Georgia. The space at the SAE School has been transformed from a dirt lot into a beautiful green space that will promote a healthy lifestyle, educate students on the value of teamwork, and most importantly, unify kids across the community who come from different backgrounds. Eight July dates have been added to the Vision to Learn Summer Break calendar of onsite mobile clinics at Cobb County Public Library locations. Vision to Learn provides high exams and prescription glasses for students ages 5 to 18, free of charge. The program has reached significantly more children than last year's record of almost 400 exams, resulting in more than 250 students receiving prescription glasses. Registration is required and space is limited. Please visit cobbcat.org to schedule an appointment. Hope Family Resource Center is seeking your assistance with their back-to- Hope Family Resource Center is seeking your assistance with their back-to-school fundraiser. Book bags and school supplies are needed for the upcoming school year. There are, there are three ways that you can donate. One, you can visit hopefamilyresourcecenter.org, drop off your donations at six one zero eight Mabelton Parkway, Suite one sixteen, from now through July seventeenth, between ten a.m. and four p.m. Monday through Thursday, or you can text seven seven zero five two five zero five six five to donate. For more information, please contact six seven eight three one zero zero five two Join me and District Four Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes for our monthly In-the-Zone Community Meeting. We will recap June zoning decisions and discuss July's cases. Our monthly meetings is a great way to stay abreast of zoning applications in your community. To join the meeting, please email monique.sheffield@cobbcounty.org. And graduate, congratulations again to Michael Register for returning to Cobb County following a thirty-year career in public safety. Congratulations and welcome back. And while I do not have a slide, I wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July weekend.
I wanna thank the Board of Commissioners for us agreeing on passing our resolution on antisemitism within our county. This is the first time, I think, such a resolution has been passed here, but I know we are not the first leaders to feel similarly, and I'm, and I'm grateful for, um, not just our board members, but those in the community that also denounce the activities that have been occurring in our county. I wanna thank everyone who came out for our Juneteenth celebration, uh, in Marietta over the weekend. Cobb NAACP does a great job, and we also had our second African-American policy discussion that Monday, and I wanna express my profound gratitude to all who dedicated their time and energy to serve and educate themselves over that weekend. Um, I'm, am also fortunate for the numerous community leaders and organizations who are working to guide conversations forward about policy and initiatives aimed at supporting African-American residents in our county, who comprise thirty percent of our population. In recognizing diversity, I'm grateful that we are continuing our annual international festival. About fifteen percent of our residents here in the county are foreign-born, and this is an opportunity for us to recognize their various backgrounds. We are still in need of performers, vendors, and volunteers for the festival. Our festival, again, is a way that we recognize different traditions through food, music, and art. This year's festival will be held on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, from ten a.m. to six p.m. at Jim Miller Park Event Center. Please go online to Cobb County's website so you can get a link if you're interested in becoming a vendor today. We will be kicking off our all-in-town hall meetings between August and October of this year. This is an opportunity for residents to receive highlights of matters going on in the county and to engage in meaningful dialogue with staff. And these meetings are also open to the public to get their, um, perspective as well and hear about their concerns, which gives us opportunity to better serve them and address their pressing, um, needs. There will be more details forthcoming on the dates and locations. Finally, Happy Independence Day. I hope everyone has a happy July Fourth, and speaking of happiness, we are all grateful to see the return of our Public Safety Director, Michael Register, to Cobb County, and we look forward to continuing the great work that has already begun in, um, several of our agencies. I mean, all of our agencies have been accredited over the past years, have been receiving statewide and national awards, and yes, big up, I see you back there. And so, um, it takes all of us working together, but it's grateful to have a director to bring us all together through our work. With that, I hope everybody has a good evening, and again, have a great July Fourth holiday.